I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core state standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County School Board. I want to apologize on behalf of the board for keeping you all waiting these 30 minutes. We have a pre-agenda meeting immediately before this meeting, and we have speakers come to us at that meeting, and on occasion, they bring us controversial issues. Actually, it's more the norm than the exception, and tonight was no exception, and our speakers went a little bit long, so that is why we are late getting in here tonight. Welcome again to the Orange County School Board. Tonight, we have invited a very, very special person to lead us in our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to brag on her a little bit more in a moment. But ladies and gentlemen, please welcome 2014 Florida Teacher of the Year, Westridge Middle School ESOL Language Arts Teacher, Ms. Dorina Sakman.
If you would remain standing, if you don't mind. I'm so sorry. Little exercise today. Would you please stand and join me in just a moment of silence for right now? Thank you very much. Would you please remain standing so that we may say our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Well, early this month, during a televised show at Hard Rock Live at Universal Studios, Ms. Sakman and four other teachers throughout the state were honored for their commitment to, as Dorina loves to put it, "the toughest job that you'll ever love," that of teaching our children. But only one was selected Teacher of the Year, and that was our very own Dorina Sakman. And folks, to put that in perspective, we have close to 12,500 teachers in Orange County Public Schools alone. We have 67 school districts in this state, close to 3,000 schools, and over 83,000 teachers in the state of Florida. But we only have one Florida Teacher of the Year, Dorina Sakman. Dorina, you're going to find, and not to put the pressure on Dorina, but she is the most natural at this I've ever seen, and we'd like you to share with us for a minute what you anticipate experiencing this year as you serve as Florida's Teacher of the Year. And let me also share with you, and frankly, I think for all that she's given us, all those pills in comparison, but as Teacher of the Year, Dorina also earned a grant worth $10,000 from the Macy's Foundation. And it's funny, my script says "a generous Macy's gift card." They don't tell me how much, but I hope it was a lot, because you've earned it, and you're styling and showing it.
My suit.
And an all-expense-paid trip to New York City to attend the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Dorina, once she once said, quote, "We're always so proud of our students, but now they're proud of me, and I love it." And Dorina, we are extremely proud of you ourselves. So if you could, share with us a few words and let us know what you're anticipating this year.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Soblet. And thank you, everyone, for coming. This is wonderful. I didn't expect such a vast variety of people, and especially the new principals that are coming in. How exciting for me to be speaking in front of the new principals as well, as well as the board. What does it mean to be the Krista McCall of Ambassador for Education for the state of Florida? And according to legislature, this is exactly what it says. There are 10 major goals on which my job as ambassador must focus, one of which is to enhance the stature of teachers and the teaching profession. And if there's one thing that the Chancellor Stewart and the Commissioner Bennett did know, is that during my interview, they happened to say, "Wow, you are really passionate about the why of teaching." And if anyone is aware of Simon Sinek and the book called, actually, Start With Why, I love his TED Talks. And although they talk about leadership in the workforce and in the business world, I translated that into our world, the world of education. And I said, "Wow, what is the why of teaching for us?" And it's about the passion, the passion of teaching. And I said, "It's imperative that the teachers now get back their passion." And I made this chart for the Commissioner, as well as for the Chancellor. And it's an L-shaped chart that talks about the productivity. And parents, you'll understand this as well. The productivity, meaning our student learning gains, our student FCAT, our student growth, is always going up. And as it's going up, we have this passion for teachers and the why of why they teach that's kind of going this way. We need that parallel of productivity and teacher passion together in order for us to make better learning gains, especially with the new and exciting changes of Common Core. So I said to the Commissioner, "How do we do this?" And he said, "Well, you're the ambassador. You have other goals in which you can make that happen." And so one of the ways, and another goal that I'll be doing as ambassador, is to attract a talent and a wonderful group of people to become teachers, including our men and women in uniform that have served overseas and coming back now and looking to have other professions. And why not, if they served our country, serve our country again by assisting us with our children here as educators? So I'll be coming back here to the RBELC in front of 120 senior interns who are ready to embark on the journey of becoming a teacher. And I look forward to empowering them to empower themselves, to make sure that they do have that why, that passion of teaching that we so desperately need in this time of change that we have for education. So I'm very excited about that, because I want the other teachers, the more seasoned teachers like me, to know that change is good. Change is work. Change is progress. And change is a work in progress. And I think that's important, what we all have to do as parents and teachers and educators to come together. And a final way in which we may parallel that productivity and that passion that I'm so passionate about is, of course, by focusing on the last goal that they asked me to do as ambassador, is to promote the teaching profession within the community and business groups. Now, OCPS is unprecedented in this, so that's why I feel like I'm fueled already with the background knowledge of having partners in education. So, oh, the FLDOE found out that I love doing community service, and I love doing 5Ks, even though with every learning gain I had, I gained a pound. I now know that I have to actually do some 5Ks. So you are the first to know this, and it's very exciting. They have created a red cape for me, and on the back of the red cape, it will say, actually, interestingly enough, "Teachers are the real superheroes." And it will be bedazzled and look great, where I will invite all the teachers, administrators, students, everyone, to come and do 5Ks around the state. That's only 3.2 miles, and so it's not bad. And we would all come together so that we are part of the community. And then what happens? The community sees us. They see the teachers. They see the students in the community. Therefore, they will have the organizations, the businesses, the programs, and they'll say, "Hey, they're reaching their arms out to us. Let's reach our arms out to them." And we will come together. Because of that old adage that "it takes a village to raise a child," well, now it takes a village to raise a child's achievement. And when the ELC created this amazing, amazing recognition for me last week, I said to them, "My motto is 'believe.'" And I hope that you all will think of the word "believe" in your head and say, "Okay, believe, B-E-L-I-E-V-E. Be the educators who live to inspire and empower via excellence." I hope you all believe this year. Thank you so very much for this opportunity.
Every time I hear Dorina, I just thank my lucky gods that I don't have to run against her. You are such a natural, and if there's one thing nobody will ever accuse you of, it's not having enthusiasm or energy. I just want to go storm that hill or run through the tunnel every time I hear from you. Mr. Roach.
Yes, I, you know, this board over the years has won a lot of awards, and individuals on this, in this district, have won many, many awards. And they've all been very impressive, and I certainly wouldn't want to take away from any of those. But I think that this award, the Teacher of the Year in the state of Florida, is probably the most important award this board in this district could ever, ever win. And so with that, I want to honor you, Dorina, and tell you, you are in a perfect position for 365 days to do something that is terribly important. I don't know that teacher morale has been lower lately than it has now. And I think that you have, and I mean this, a very, very real potential impact on that statewide. And as Mr. Soblet says, you're just a natural, and so you use that, and you speak from your heart, and you lift up these teachers, and you tell them how important they really are. And we really couldn't be where we are without any of their help. So that's the position you have, and I'm just so grateful that you are out there, because I know you can do some good. So come back and see us.
Well, Dorina, we are frugal stewards of the public tax dollars. You got gift cards from Macy's and trips to New York. We have a certificate for you. And one thing I've learned about every great teacher is they're all very loving individuals. We'd all like to shake your hand. We'd rather get one of your signature hugs, because you're the most loving individual I've ever met, which is a wonderful trait, and our children are so blessed for it. But if you could, we'd like to give you this certificate, and we'd all like to shake your hand.
Absolutely. And before I do that, I'd like to give you something very important on behalf of Macy's. They asked me to give this award to my school, but I thought it was more for the community, because that's what I believe in so much. This is Macy's Award that I thought that the OCPS and our home here at the ELC would actually benefit from. So on behalf of Macy's, this is the Teacher of the Year Award for all of us. Thank you very much.
And I want to say, as the District 5 representative for Westridge Middle School, you have certainly made us proud. You've heard our comments to you. We know that you're going to go far, and this is in behalf of School Board District 5 for your success. And now, on to national.
Congratulations again, Dorina. And thank you for making us so proud at Orange County Public Schools. Ms. Moore was saying that we need a curio cabinet in the lobby, our very own Heisman case, to put our Teacher of the Year awards. Thank you for that. All right. Superintendent, I know we have, I believe, no less than 17 newly-appointed administrators we're going to recognize tonight, so I'm going to go right to that, because they've been waiting a long time. And again, thank you to you and your families and supporters and colleagues for waiting. Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have several, so I will be swift. First, we would like to introduce to you Shaleen Burgess from Seminole County Public Schools. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Washington Shores Elementary.
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to introduce my son, who's a Hubbleville junior at Lake Mary High School. Go Rams! Jalen Burgess. And also, I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and the School Board members for this opportunity. Dr. Jarra, Deputy Superintendent. Mrs. Schuler, Associate Superintendent. I am looking forward to the opportunity to work with Dr. Grove and the Washington Shores Community, and District 5 School Board Member Kat Gordon. Thank you again.
Next, we have Kevin Flanagan, Administrative Dean at Hunters Creek, who will become the new Assistant Principal at Hunters Creek Middle School.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Pam Gould, who is our area board member, for the opportunity to help at Hunters Creek Middle School. Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jarra for giving me this opportunity to become the Assistant Principal. Dr. Pope, Mr. Rudzik, and Dr. Cupid McCoy, who kind of shepherded me along throughout this entire process to becoming an AP. There's someone here that I wouldn't be in this position if it weren't for her guidance over the last six years, so I would like to thank Dr. Ann Kukara for helping me along the way. And of course, the people that are most important to me in my life, my wife Catherine and my son Matthew, my daughters Rebecca and Robin. Thank you very much.
Daniel Kempinger, Instructional Support School Transformation Office, to become Assistant Principal at Walker Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Roach, Judge Roach, for accepting my nomination for Assistant Principal at Walker. And I would like to thank Dr. Gonzalez for the opportunity to continue to grow in my career and follow my passion of being an educator. I would also like to thank my wife and my two boys, Nixon and Matt, who have put up with a lot of long days and nights to get here. And I look forward to continuing this process. Thank you.
Kelly Marlowe, who's currently Resource Teacher at West Orange High School, will be the new Assistant Principal at Boone High School.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I would like to thank School Board members Pam Gould and Rick Roach for this opportunity, Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jarra for this opportunity, Area Superintendent Dr. Bridgette Williams and Mr. Rudzik, Executive Area Director Greg Moody and Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, Principal James Larson and Dr. Margaret McMillan, along with Mr. Andrew Jackson, who was my mentor for the past three years, along with my husband Jesse Marlowe. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Jennifer Quarles is Curriculum Resource Teacher at Lee Middle. She will become the Assistant Principal at Lee Middle School.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all the members of the School Board, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, Dr. Gordon, and Dr. Fritzler for this opportunity, as well as my principal, Mr. Hepburn, for always expecting more out of me, and my husband Derek Quarles for always being there to support me. I'm very excited about the upcoming school year and excited about getting our kids passionate about learning.
Daniel Tofoli will be the new Assistant Principal for Alternative Education.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Jenkins and the board, for providing this opportunity for me to be on the administration team for OCPS. I'd also like to thank Dr. Bernier and Mr. Tovin for giving me the chance to serve the students and team members of Alternative Ed and all their sites. But last but not least, I'd like to thank my wife, who always supported me in all these career choices I've made over the years. Thank you.
Donald Vega, from Instructional Support Teacher at Avalon to Assistant Principal at Avalon Elementary.
Good evening. Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, Mrs. Flynn, fellow board members, thank you for this incredible opportunity to serve OCPS as Assistant Principal. I look forward to the many challenges and opportunities awaiting me. Dr. Diaz, Mr. Wright, thank you for believing in me. Thank you for your support. A real big thank you to my principal, Mrs. Sanders, for motivating me and guiding me along the way. And for my family, my lovely wife Kim, who's a teacher at Riverdale Elementary, and my two amazing boys, Thomas and Dean, thank you for your support. I wouldn't be here without them.
Next, we have Denise Bainbridge, Assistant Principal at Waterford, who will be the new principal at Sunrise Elementary.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to serve Sunrise Elementary. Chairman Soblet, School Board members, and especially Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jarra for giving me the opportunity of a lifetime. I especially would also like to thank Dr. Diaz and John Wright for believing in me and giving me this wonderful, amazing, amazing opportunity. And most of all, my husband Frank for supporting me through all the long days and long nights and McDonald's dinners and lack of dinners. So thank you all very much.
Brian Burns is moving from Assistant Principal at Lake Silver to new principal for Rock Springs Elementary.
I'd like to personally thank the School Board and Dr. Jenkins for giving me this challenge and this opportunity to lead Rock Springs Elementary School, to Dr. Gordon, Dr. Fritzler for believing in me and giving me the guidance, to Dr. Pinder for endless coaching and helping me become the principal I am, to the Rock Springs family and staff and parents for all their continued support, to my mom and dad for everything, and to my wife and my son for keeping me grounded. Rock Springs staff, we will soar to success.
John Kukara is Assistant Principal at Wendy Ridge. He will be the new principal at Waterbridge Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I'd like to thank Chairman Mr. Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, the School Board, my Area Superintendent, Mr. John Rudzik, my Executive Area Director, Dr. Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, for giving me this thrilling and exciting opportunity to take on a wonderful school. I couldn't be more thrilled. I'd also like to thank my wife, Ann Kukara, for putting up with me. I'd like to thank my principal, Sheila Johnson, for teaching me so much that I can never pay back. I'm here tonight with my son, Robert, my daughter Elizabeth, and my parents, Jack and Joyce Kukara, and there's some staff members from Wendy Ridge rooting for me. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Anna Garrido is Assistant Principal at Columbia Elementary. She will be the new principal at Audubon Park Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chairperson Soblet and the board for this opportunity, Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jarra, Dr. Diaz and Mr. Wright. I'm very excited to lead the community, students, and parents and faculty at Audubon Park Elementary. I'd like to thank my family and my husband for their continued support. So thank you.
Julie Helton, from Assistant Principal at East River High School to Principal at Weingard Elementary.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to be selected as the next principal of Weingard Elementary School. I would like to thank Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, and Dr. Vasquez for this awesome opportunity. I would also like to thank my East River family, who are here supporting me. And I said I wasn't going to cry. This is bad. For the past two years, as well as School Board Member Joey Cadel. It's been a great two years, and as you can tell, it's pretty bittersweet for me to leave. Going forward, I will be in Mr. Rick Roach's area, and I promise to be as passionate about Weingard as I am about East River.
Are you crying because of that, she said?
So thank you all again for this opportunity.
Next, we have Lisa James, who will be departing Assistant Principalship at Jones High School to become the principal at Bridgewater Middle School.
Good evening. I would like to thank you for the opportunity of becoming the principal of Bridgewater Middle School. Thank you, Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, School Board members. And a special thank you to Ms. Kat Gordon. Thank you for supporting me in the Jones High School community. I would like to also thank Dr. Lawson, Dr. Pope, and Dr. Williams. I would also like to thank all of my former principals, Mrs. Maxwell and Mr. Salisbury and Ms. Scott. Thank you, Terrence and Cameron, my family members, for always being by my side. And I would also like to thank my family, friends, and colleagues for all your support. Thank you.
Kelly Maldonado was Assistant Principal at Avalon Middle School. She will be the new principal at Azalea Park Elementary.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to serve at Azalea Park Elementary School. I'm very excited to be there. Thank you, Chairman Soblet, and Daryl Flynn, my current School Board member, and Nancy Robinson, my new School Board member, and the rest of the board, thank you. Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jarra, Dr. Diaz, Mr. Wright, Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Gordon, Judy, my current administrative team. They're just an amazing team of people to work with, and have pushed me to be who I am today. And obviously, my family. My husband Paul is here, who's also an administrator here in Orange County. My sons Gabriel and Jacob, who gave up a trip that we were supposed to be in Washington this week so I could be here tonight, and my mom and dad. Thank you so much.
Jose Martinez, Assistant Principal at Lake Nona Middle School, will be the new principal at Lake Nona Middle School.
Good evening. As I embark upon this journey of leading Lake Nona Middle, I would like to thank School Board Member Daryl Flynn, Superintendent Dr. Jenkins, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Jarra for their vote of confidence, Dr. Lawson and Southeast Area Superintendent Dr. Vasquez for their persistence in demanding excellence, EADs John Rudzik and James Larson for their continuous support. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank my support system, my mentors, Dr. Cupid-McCoy, Dr. Rivers, Tim Smith, Karen Furno, Fernita Polk, and finally, my family and friends, my wife Celeste, my parents Jose and Marret, Marisol Mendez, Tammy Bray, Andrea Parisi, and Jackie Hammond. Thank you again for affording me this amazing opportunity to lead and to serve.
Amy McHale is the Assistant Principal at Hunters Creek Middle School. She will become the principal at Hunters Creek Middle.
Mr. Soblet, Ms. Gould, School Board, Dr. Jenkins, and Dr. Jarra, thank you so much for this opportunity to serve Orange County Public Schools. I'd like to thank Dr. Pope and Mr. Rudzik, as well as Dr. Brown and Dr. Cupid-McCoy for guiding me along the way and the future leadership that you're going to serve me with. My mentor, Dr. Kukara, I shouldn't have looked at her, sorry. Thank you so much for pushing me to be the leader that I am today and modeling such great leadership potential that I can model every day for Orange County Public Schools. Thank you to my husband, who is also a teacher at Dr. Phillips High School, and my kids, Courtney and Avery. I love you, and your support and love means everything to me. My family, my extended family, my in-laws, as well as my parents, thank you so much for making me the person that I am. I look forward to continuing to serve the Hunters Creek Middle School community, and thank you for this opportunity.
Next, we have Kathy Peterson, who is currently the Assistant Principal at Cypress Springs Elementary. She will become the new principal at Waterford Elementary.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet and Superintendent Jenkins for your leadership and vision as you are at the helm of OCPS, leading us to be the producers of successful students in the nation. I also want to thank the board and Daryl Flynn as we rejoin, and for all of your all's efforts to make sure that we achieve our mission and our goals. I want to thank Dr. Diaz, our Area Superintendent, and John Wright, and the Waterford faculty and community for their confidence in me to serve as their next principal. Finally, I would like to thank my husband, whose endless support is always there in any endeavor that I try to do to impact students' lives in a positive manner. Happy 30th anniversary. We're here tonight. And finally, I'd like to recognize my son and daughter, who are both products of Orange County Public Schools. They were college-ready and hopefully soon to be members of the workforce. Thank you for this opportunity.
Finally, we have Angela Zambro, who is Director of Exceptional Student Education, also formerly a principal in Seminole County. She will be the new principal at Andover Elementary School.
Good evening. We have a saying...
We have a saying in my world, we save the best for last, because I'm always last alphabetically. Board members, school board member, Daryl Flynn, Superintendent Jenkins, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Jara, Area Superintendent Dr. Vasquez, Executive Area Director Mr. Larson, I thank you, thank you, thank you for this opportunity. I want to express a special thanks to those who have supported me along the way over these last couple of years. Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Fritz. All of my family in curriculum and instruction, all of my family in exceptional student education. I thank you for all of your support in all of my endeavors. My village here that supports me as a leader, my husband Olivier, my children, Elena and Rayanne, I'm not gonna do this, and my sister Kathy, they have truly supported me in everything that I do. And I thank you again, and I look forward to this opportunity to serve all the stakeholders of Andover Elementary School. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to assure the members of the board, this is probably the longest personnel agenda you will see for some time. And although they were certainly somewhat rushed in their introductions to you, I want to assure you that staff have worked incredibly hard to find the best talent for our school so that we are ready for students to return to us in a very short two weeks. And so, I want to commend staff for getting the job done, for getting those selections made, informing the committees, and appropriately getting those selections made. And I have full confidence in these individuals. I don't want parents, families, loved ones to think that my brief introductions by any means indicates a lack of regard for the work that our principals do. We are very pleased with this entire panel and look forward to a great school year. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for that, Dr. Jenkins. And I hope certainly that nobody felt rushed, because I know I speak for the entire board when I say this is without exception our favorite part of the meeting, because we are celebrating one of life's great victories, your promotion into the administrative ranks or up the administrative ranks. So, thank you for all you've done for our children. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I salute you, because that was really less than 15 minutes, and you were able to get all of those wonderful. I too want to commend the superintendent and especially her staff, because our schools were left without administrators. There were other administrators that wanted to move on, and they wanted to go elsewhere, and you really don't want to hinder anyone when they want to go. But I'm not saying that Lisa wanted to go now, but we know when it's time. But I do want to say, and I do have to say something about Lisa James and coming to Jones High and really picking up the helm and working with Mrs. Maxwell as principal. She really did her best. I don't think she would have been recommended in any way if she was not the epitome of what we look at as school administrators. So, Lisa, I salute you, because you know how much I love you. I salute you. I salute you. I'm telling you, I mean, it goes way back, but girl, you just flew over, you just went over. And then I want to say, Mr. Chairman, I did not know Ms. Burgess. I know Ms. Burgess, but I do not know Ms. Burgess personally. I know Ms. Burgess from Seminole County. So, I'm hoping that she brings to Washington Shores, and I know that you tried your best to get the best fit for us, that you bring to Washington Shores. We are building a new Washington Shores that is a very close-knit community. They are now being housed in the Richmond Heights School, and then we, as a board, will decide what we will do with the Richmond Heights Center. But you will be there. You may be a little bit uncomfortable, but I think that you're gonna love it. You're still in the neighborhood, you're not far away. And Mr. Morris Staff, I live right there, so they've been tearing down and trying to get everything done, and I will assure you that you're going to love Washington Shores, and I believe that they will love you, and we welcome your son. So, maybe you will take him out of Seminole and bring him. All right. Thank you. I love you guys, and I look at all of the administrators out there. You are really about one of the best-looking group and the most energized at the end of the summer that I've ever seen. So, and I know the superintendent has already done her retreat. We're gonna be doing our board retreat, but I want you to know, each and every one of you, most of us know you, but you really seem energized to go back and work with our students and help them to achieve, because you know that they can do it, and we know that you can put the fire to it. So, go to it. We wish you the most success in the world. May God bless you. Thank you.
You know, Dr. Jenkins, I'm gonna have to have a meet and greet, honestly. I think, tonight, well, there's about four, but I think there's a total of nine principals I have, and most of them were promoted, which says a lot about the leadership of their school board member in District 3, probably. No? Okay. All right, I can't take credit for that.
You had one of them cry.
I had one crying, because she's coming to my area. But a lot of you cried, really. Mrs. Flynn cried, too. She's got a Kleenex over here. This was a, it was an emotional night, and it, but it's exciting. But I can tell you, I've never had the experience of having so many new leaders in the schools, and I guarantee you, I'll be there to support you, every one of you, everything I can do to help you out. I want to thank, welcome Julie to Weingard, and I want to thank you for going to a school with no walls.
Yes.
The only school, I think, maybe there's another one, didn't have walls between the classrooms. They've tried, they've got them up to three-quarters away now, but you can still hear them, you can't see the other children. So, Julie, they've always done well out there in spite of that, so I'm real proud of them. Got a brand-new building out there for you, so I'm really happy to have you out there. And John from Waterbridge, I have a couple of parents that wants me to text them tonight when they find out the new principal. They all want to know, who's the new person? And will they, can we break them in? And will they be all right? You know, we had a good thing going out here with Dr. Gullett. I mean, and so I have to tell them that you're gonna be a good guy, and you're gonna do the job. Heard lots of good things about you. Kelly at Boone, a very special school in my heart. My kids graduated from Boone High School, and Mr. Sablett's kids are in that area, so that's very important. Traditional school, I'm sure you'll do very well. And finally, Daniel at Walker. Now, that's a real special school. That's where I got my start decades ago as a teacher at Walker. And I know that me and Mr. Joe Salisbury will be real upset if that doesn't go well out there, right, Mr. Salisbury right over here? Mr. Salisbury was my Walker Viking brother years ago at Walker Junior. It was very great to see him, back when it was a junior high school. So, Daniel, I wish you the very best, and that's a very, very special school to me. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the other board members, so we can kill another 30 minutes here on the.
Ms. Gould.
Well, I just want to say how excited I am to be working with this new group of leadership, as well as continuing to get to know the leadership that exists in my district. This'll be my first full school year, and I'll look forward to going through it all with you. And I am just thrilled to be on your team, and anything that you need, please contact me, and I will do my best to advocate for you. So, thank you and congratulations this evening.
You can clap. It's okay. Ms. Flynn.
I too just want to congratulate everyone, those in District 2 and those out. It's an accomplishment, and I love seeing that upper emotion, and I love seeing new, fresh blood in positions coming in, and our principals, our veteran principals that can help lead them, because you need both to make a good balance. You need that experience, and you need that new, young blood. So, congratulations.
Mrs. Robinson.
I'm just gonna add my congratulations to everyone, and in particular, I'm so excited to have met Kelly tonight, Maldonado, out of Azalea Park. I know you know this, but with that A that they just got, you've got your hands full to hold on to it, and I know you're the person to do it. I'm really excited for you. And I'm very excited to have Ms. Garrido, Anna Garrido, coming back to Audubon Park. It was good to meet you years ago, and you've gone on and learned a little more, and we're excited to have you back at Audubon Park. And then Ms. Quarles at Lee Middle School, one of my favorite places. I'm excited to have you join the crew there, too. So, and I tell this to all of y'all, and I told you earlier, invite me, invite me, invite me, because I love to come visit your schools. Thank you, and congratulations.
Ms. Cadel.
I just want to say congratulations to everyone. In District 1 didn't get much recognition this evening, but I've had principals who used to be other places that have been assigned to my schools. So, I too have a lot of new principals in District 1. They just were kind of reassigned. So, to all of you, I look forward to working with you. Great things are happening. Julie, we will miss you, but we know you will soar. You have been such a wonderful asset for East River, and we've had our ups and downs, and our good times and our bad times, but I know it was great training for you. And so, to all of you, I know it will be a wonderful experience, and welcome to the leadership teams.
Well, again, on behalf of the board, congratulations. I must say, a number of board members have commented that this is probably the best-looking, most precocious group of children we've ever had in here. So, can I have all the children, 15 and under, stand up and take a bow, so we can recognize they've been so well behaved and waited a long time? You know, I was being sincere when I said this is our favorite part of the meeting, because we really are celebrating your triumphs tonight, and it's a very emotional time. It's always interesting to us up here that once one of y'all starts crying, the tears just start to flow. It's like a faucet. I always like to send folks on their way, and my colleagues have heard me say this many, many a time, by promoting you in the ranks of our administrators, it really signifies a very simple thing to the board, and that can be distilled down to one word, and that is trust. And when I say trust, it means that we trust your abilities as educational leaders, we trust your judgment, we trust your temperament, and most importantly, we trust you with the children of Orange County. So, congratulations. Have a wonderful evening, and go out and celebrate, because school has not started yet. Good night.
MIT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So, you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commencoreworks.org.
We're gonna go ahead and get started with the business portion of our meeting. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. Anybody who would like to address an item on the consent or the non-consent agenda may do so by completing an appropriate yellow form, looks like this. You can get this form at the board table from Ms. Miller-Smith, the lady to the far-left-hand side of the dais here. So, if you're here tonight to speak on any item of the agenda, I do need you to make your way up to the board table and get a speaker form from Ms. Miller-Smith if you'd like to address the board on any topic before us. I would ask everybody in the audience to please, at this time, silence your cell phones. When you do come up to address the board, you will have three minutes to address the board. We ask that you keep it professional. We do abide by Robert's Rules of Orders. Don't use any names where at all possible. If you have any scheduling constraints, please try to let us know, and we'll try to accommodate you. Also, know that the board members, we do have a monitor in front of us, so we can watch what's on the screen behind our heads. So, if during presentations, it appears as if we're not paying attention to the screen behind our heads, it's because we're watching that same presentation on the monitor in front of us. With that, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
We have three changes, Mr. Chairman. Item 4.03, there was some adjustment to that document, basically cosmetic corrections. There is no additional cost or personnel changes. Some of the changes were just a title clarification and realphabetizing. Item 5.04, and that was in collaboration with OESPA as they looked over the final document for printing their contract. Item 5.04, we are withdrawing any of the students from the North Learning Community from the matrix. They will be brought forward at the next school board meeting. And then item 702, we have deleted any reference to the Common Core State Standards, as they require no board action.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda as suggested by Dr. Jenkins. Can I have a motion to do so? It's been booed by Ms. Gould. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Ms. Flynn. Is there any discussion or debate on that? Saying none, all those in favor of amending the agenda as proposed, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll oppose nay. Show the agenda amended. All right, we are now on item 3.01, which is the adoption of millage required to support the 2013-14 tentative budget. Superintendent Jenkins, let me hand that over to you. And Mr. Rodriguez, while she's going into this, can you please come over here for a second? Dr. Jenkins.
This is standard protocol. For this time of year, we will need to actually adopt our millage by vote of the board, and also approve our tentative budget, and establish a date for our final public hearing. We have before you Chief Financial Officer Rick Collins, who will walk you through a brief presentation. In fact, let me tell you what the contents will be. There'll be a presentation of the proposed millage, and then a presentation of the proposed budget, an opportunity for public comments and board discussion, and then we will need a formal adoption of the total millage and of the tentative budget with the establishment of a date for the final hearing. With that, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Most of the information that I will be presenting tonight is information that we've already discussed at the work sessions that we've already had. But I want to go through the information again, for the sake of the public that might be here, so that we all have an opportunity to hear the information. In order to talk about this process, we have to start talking about our property taxes. That's the first thing that we have to discuss, and also will be the first action item that you will have to take tonight, dealing with the actual millage rate, which is the rate that will be applied to property in order to generate the property taxes. Property taxes are actually a function of assessed value, exemptions, and the millage rate. The property appraiser's office actually establishes the assessed value, so you don't have to do that. The state legislature actually establishes the exemptions that are allowed. And then, the combination of the state legislature and the school board then establish the millage. And by that, I mean that the state legislature establishes the maximum amounts of the millage that you can levy. Looking at the actual tax base here in Orange County, you can see the little red dot there that represents the revenues for the tax base for the current year. You can see that that is actually up as compared to last year, and I think I mentioned to you earlier that the estimate that came from the property appraiser's office was actually significantly higher than was used in the legislative session. And so, this is actually the certified taxable values as of July 1st. That's what we have to use to build our budget around. And it was about a 3.4% increase in those taxable values, so that was rather significant. Looking at the millage rate comparison for the 2013-14 year as compared to last year, you can see that there's actually a slight decrease in the millage rate for the required local effort. That rate for the required local effort is the rate that the board must levy in order to receive any state funds. You do not have the option to levy more than the millage that is proposed, and you do not have the option to levy less if you want to participate in the state FEFP program. Discretionary millage, you do have the discretion to levy that or not levy that, and then the additional voted millage, as you know, is the one mill that the voters approved to support operations, continued operations here in the school district. Just for your information, that additional voted millage does generate- Just for your information, that additional voted millage does generate approximately just under $86 million is the projection for the upcoming year. The Capital Projects Millage at 1.5 mills is the same millage as last year. It is the maximum amount currently allowed by law in the state of Florida. The state legislature does establish that maximum. So the total millage that we will be asking for you to approve tonight will be the 8.362 mills, which is .116 mills less than the millage rate from last year. Now, the state law also requires us to compare the millage rate that we're proposing to levy against something called the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate, when applied to the current tax roll, after adjusting for new growth, produces the same revenues as the prior year. So even though I showed you that the actual millage rate we're proposing is less than last year, we actually had to advertise a tax increase. So the required local effort, based on the comparison to the rollback rate, is .47% over the rollback rate. And then the total millage is 1.34% over the rollback rate. Let me break this down a little bit for you on an individual homeowner, what that means for them. So a homeowner with a property value of $150,000 this year, with a $25,000 homestead exemption, would pay about $19 more per year because of the change in his assessed value. Because if we were just looking at the change in the millage rate, he would actually pay $14.50 less. But because his assessed value went up, he would actually end up paying the additional Conversely, a commercial property owner of a piece of property that valued at $1 million, since he has no homestead exemption for that, his taxes would go up approximately $110. Again, solely attributable to the increase in the value. If you looked at the change solely based on the rate change, it would actually have been a decrease of $116. So I just want to make sure you understand that we did advertise an increase in the taxes in the paper, and it's because of the increase in the assessed values. Okay, let's roll right into the proposed annual budget for next year. Here's a timeline that we put together, that we complied with as we started developing the budget for this year. Again, the budgeting process really never stops. We start in the fall and continue on and through the spring and into the summer, and then, once we adopt the budget, we start on the next year's budget. So it really never stops. In summary on our budget, it continues to maintain focus on the district's strategic plan and accelerating our momentum, preserves the academic programs, retains highly qualified teachers, protects arts, athletics, and student activities. That was what you promised the voters when they voted for the one mill. It also complies with board policies as well as state and federal requirements, and it includes the impact of collaborative bargaining process to date. Looking at the actual numbers for 2013-14 as compared to the original budget from 2012-13, you can see the amounts there, the general fund of approximately $1.7 billion. And I won't go through each of them, but you can see the differences. The Capital Projects budget looks a little strange at this point because we have not included the carryover projects in these numbers. We do this each year at the time of the tentative hearing, and then we will amend those carryover projects into the capital budget at the time of the final hearing in September. Okay, let's focus a little bit on the general fund. Again, a $1.7 billion budget. It's the operating budget of the school district. The primary source is the Florida Education Finance Program. Funding is equalized per student statewide. Revenues are primarily from sales taxes and from local property taxes. It also includes the one mill of additional voted millage. Looking at the revenue, let's talk about the FTE because the FTE really generates the revenues for the district. FTEs is the number of students that we have. For 2013-14, we're forecast to have 185,696 students, and we continue to grow. There was a change, however, and by the way, that's about a 3,300 student growth over last year's numbers. Now, if you look at the actual reports that came out of the legislature this year, you will see a different number for our FTE. And that's because of the way that virtual education is going to be reported for the upcoming year. Virtual education, if a student is taking a class at night or on weekends at Florida Virtual School, in the past, we would get funded for the instructional time that we provided, and then the virtual school would also get funded for the time that they provided instruction. Under the new law, you have to take all instruction, and you have to combine it all, and you limit it all to one FTE. So everything will be prorated down when you do that. So our FTE and Florida Virtual School FTE has to be kind of meshed together, and then it's all prorated downward. That process, for us, is estimated to be, the impact is about 1,500 FTE that we would be reduced. So when you look at the reports coming out of Tallahassee, they'll be using a number of 184,164, and that's because of that adjustment that they make in the FTE because of Florida, the FTE and the virtual education program. Now, for looking at per-student calculations, I just want to clarify for the board, I used 185,000 because we're going to continue to provide services to all those kids, and so we have to fund those kids at the school. So we use 185,000 because that's really the number of students that we actually have. Looking at the, again, funding per student, you can see here, there was a significant increase in funding per student that was provided as part of our regular funding. In fact, there was a total of $333 per-student increase going from last year to this year. Now, of that $333 per student, about $275 of that was committed by the legislature for two things, for the teacher's salary categorical and also for the retirement rate change. So just those two things alone accounted for $275 of the $333 increase. Now, looking at this particular chart, it looks like, oh gosh, we're almost back to where we were back in 2007-08 as far as funding per student, so things must be going pretty well. But when you adjust based on Consumer Price Index and look at the actual buying power, we're still about $1,089 loss in purchasing power as compared to 2007-08. So there's still a huge gap between where we were being funded back in '07-08 and where we are now. And this actually does include the one mill as well. So it would have been even much higher. $462 of that funding in the gold portion or the orange portion is actually from the special voted millage. Now, looking at the percentage of state general revenue going to education, you can see that in the early years before the lottery, we were getting over 60% of the revenues for education. Right now, we're around 53%. So it's been kind of a roller coaster ride over the years. Has rebounded a little bit in 2013-14. That rebound is primarily because of the teacher salary categorical, where the state added additional money in that area. Kind of a busy chart here, but it shows how the lottery dollars are distributed. The green portion down at the bottom is the public school portion. We used to get somewhere around 60% to 70% of the lottery proceeds back in the early years. That dwindled, and now we're down to about 31% of the total actually goes to public schools. Now, of that 31%, 27% of that is for school recognition, which is really an enhancement. That was a new program that was developed to reward schools that either improved a letter grade or maintained an A. 61% of that money, however, is just infused right into the base FEFP program. It's not additional money. It just basically supports your K-12 instructional programs, and then 12% of that goes towards post-secondary. So of the 31% that goes to public education or public schools, excuse me, 27% is for the school recognition program, but 61% goes for K-12 regular, and then 12% is for post-secondary regular. So only 27% of that small amount is going towards an enhancement activity. This shows the estimated revenues by source. State portion is about 55%. Last year, the state portion was around 54%, so there was a little tick-up in the state funding portion of our estimated revenues for the general fund. And again, that was attributable to the teacher salary categorical, where the state put additional money into that categorical. Talk a little bit about appropriations. We've talked about the school budget allocation formulas. I won't go into that in detail. And the department allocations are approximately the same, except for some realignment, especially in the teaching and learning area that Dr. Jenkins has already discussed with you. Looking at some of the estimated cost increases, major cost areas is the increase because of the 2014 Compensation Plan. FRS rate changes, substantial rate increase for FRS this year is going to cost us about $18 million. Health insurance adjustments is going to cost close to $13 million. And then we opened another elementary school for about $1 million in additional costs. And the first year of our new student system implementation is about $9.5 million there. Also, about $600,000 was for the expanded high school summer guidance program, additional days for those guidance counselors during the summer. Expanded professional development, we had about $1.3 million in recurring costs there and about $13.8 million in non-recurring funds we used for the summer training program. Expanded safety and security costs, about $5 million were budgeted, roll-forward funds, and there are other budgeted funds throughout the budget for safety issues as well. Digital curriculum pilot, if you recall, we budgeted about $10.8 million in funds at the end of last year, about $2.8 million of that rolled forward into this year's budget. The rest of it was either spent or encumbered. Looking at the functional breakdown of our appropriations, again, we continue that the priority of instruction and instructional support, so those areas remain fairly constant over time. Some of the other budgetary impacts, I mentioned the digital pilot. There are other impacts of moving towards digital curriculum that will impact our budget this year and will continue to affect us until we fully implement the requirements going into 15-16. I talked about the virtual education changes, so I won't get into that again. Dual enrollment, you know about that, where we now have to pay some tuition to the colleges for each of our students who take dual enrollment classes at the college campuses. We continue to negotiate with our community college partners on this to keep the costs as low as possible. There's a continued pressure on the general fund due to reduced federal grants as required because of the reduction in the federal grants as required by sequestration. As you know, the sequestration is hitting all of our federal grants for this coming year, and as those grants are reduced, that does put greater pressure on our general fund to help provide services to our kids. Healthcare changes because of medical inflation, as well as the early impact of the healthcare reform legislation, is driving some of those costs up. Some of the future issues that we have to keep in mind is the assessment process for Common Core, whether it's PARC or some equivalent, is going to cost money. So we're going to have to start planning for how to do that and those costs associated with it. Performance pay will be coming around, required to be in place by 2014-15. Continuing the implementation of our healthcare reform, there was a delay in some of the provisions of healthcare reform to 2015. There are other portions of the law that are going to impact us this year. The federal budget sequestration, one thing to keep in mind is that is a 10-year sequestration program. In other words, the cuts are not just a one-year thing. It's every year for 10 years. So the amount of the sequestration will continue to impact us over the next several years unless Congress makes a change to it. The other thing is the End of the Race to the Top Grant that will conclude at the end of this current fiscal year. And the big one here is the conclusion of the special millage revenue after the 2014-15 year. That's something that we're going to have to keep our eyes on, what's going to be the impact when that $86 million of revenues, if it goes away. Going right into the Capital Projects Fund, a little over a billion-dollar budget, primary revenue sources are sales tax, property tax, impact fees. Minimal state support, we get no state PICO anymore. Primary uses are for comprehensive renovations, new schools, capital renewal, debt service, and operations. Here's the projected revenues for our capital program over the next several years, and you can see how what happens to the sales taxes if they are not renewed. Keep in mind, for 2014, that green portion represents about $183 million, and then about $188 million in 2015, and then it drops down to about $96 million in 2016. This is for 2014, the proposed, projected use of the Capital Projects Funds, and I won't go into a lot of details on that. It just shows how they're being spent for the upcoming year. The new schools that will be opening over the next five years, you've seen this list As far as the comprehensive projects, we will continue our current list and priority order, comply with the settlement agreement, bring each school up to prototype quality and to five-year enrollment projection, maintain the funding of our capital reserve, capital renewal reserve, excuse me, adjust schedules as needed based on revenue availability and other legal restrictions. Right now, based on the plan that's being presented to you, we can get through project number 93, plus Washington Shores Elementary School, based on the numbers that are in this particular budget. Here are the comprehensive projects for construction, and here are the ones for design. I will point out that I did add the Paramore Area K8 onto the design area because that one will begin design shortly. And we're planning for an August 2017 occupancy for that particular school, so that the rezoning can take place with all of the other schools. Some of the other capital issues. Our ability to issue COPs, new COPs are still limited for many years. Again, our conclusion of our sales tax authorization ends December 31, 2015. As you know, we went through a complete facilities condition assessment with our facilities department, and I wanted to point out that based on this budget, we are planning on using some of the capital renewal funds for this year. About $21 million is planned to be spent for the capital renewal program on some of our facilities. And we also have funds set aside in the budget for safety and security as well. And many of the features, safety and security features, will be built into the new schools and the major renovations, but we'll also be spending some money on other facilities as well. Debt service fund, $204 million. It's basically a place where we accumulate resources to pay off long-term debt. I won't get into a lot of details on that unless you have questions about it later. Special revenue fund, right now, in the special revenue fund, the only thing we have budgeted is for the food service program. The federal projects are also recorded in the special revenue fund, and these federal grants will be amended into the special revenue fund as they're approved. Based on the information from the Based on the information from the food service area, meal prices are based on the board approval rates, and they did not change for the 2013-14, so the meal prices will remain the same for Internal service fund, it's $260 million, and it has three major areas. Employee benefit trust fund, this is where we pay for your health insurance program. It's funded by board contributions for employees and deductions for their dependents, covers medical claim payments and charges for services, and the benefits remain essentially the same, but the cost actually goes up about 9.5% for district contributions for this year. Property casualty fund, it's where we pay for property liability and workers' comp claims. Printing services, about $5 million. So that pretty much concludes the presentation. I'll turn this back over to Dr. Jenkins. The remaining items, of course, would be public comments, board discussion, adoption of the millage, and then adoption of the actual budget.
Members of the board, I would really like to restate what is obvious to us in this room, but may not be obvious to others who view the broadcast. This information is not new to the school board. We have gone over extensively all of this information in work sessions and in individual meetings with board members. I have to say again how pleased we are to be able to present a positive budget and not have to go through the painstaking process of trimming dollars due to limited resources. And we have certainly additional resources from the state, but we have to thank our community for the additional mill that they provided to us as well. We are happy to take your questions, any discussion after the public comments. We'd be happy to attend to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and thank you, Mr. Collins, for that, as always, excellent presentation. Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. It certainly has been a work in progress, and I know it's difficult for the public because you get different messages coming from the different counties, because we're certainly in different places than we've been in the past, thankfully to the voters here in Orange County. And so it is difficult because you'll hear one thing coming out of one county and one of the other. One piece that's really new to us, and I know it's going to be another work in progress, is these refunds or rebates for the students that are taking virtual education and, of course, the dual enrollment. Now, I did some math while I was sitting here because you said you thought it was equivalent of 1,500 FTEs, and so my math, I just did it by about 6,000 a student. If I'm correct, Mr. Collins, that's the question, is it an upwards of $9 million impact?
It is a large impact. The way we calculated it, just so you know, is we took the total revenues coming from the state, and then we just divided by the 185,000 students. The question that you're getting to, would we have received an additional $9 million for the students had they counted FTE the other way? And the answer is no, they would not have. They would actually have lowered the base student allocation. So I can't say that we would have received an additional $9 million. What I am saying is that the funding that was provided to us is now being divided by a smaller number.
Right. And so in terms of the high school budgeting, have there been different instructions given to the high school principals because of the dual enrollment and the virtual? I'm wondering how that's going to impact. When I looked at it, I didn't really see much difference, and I was just curious how you were going to work through that this year.
Well, we can't really restrict the student who wants to take a virtual class on weekends or nights or summer, whatever. We can't really restrict him from taking that at Florida Virtual. So whatever that impact is, it will just be absorbed into the cost of operations.
Right. So we won't be lowering the budgets initially to the high school principals, and we'll be absorbing it somewhere else?
The allocations to the schools will not be adjusted based on this. We will allocate resources to the schools based on the actual number of students at the schools, because we're providing full, if a student's taking a full load at a high school, we will provide funding for that student for a full load, regardless of whether he's taking a virtual class after hours or weekends. We do have to provide resources to that high school so that they can cover the full cost of all of those resources they're having to commit, the teachers, the books, all of the supplies and everything. So we will continue our allocation formulas to our schools based on the actual number of students, not based on the calculated number.
Okay. And then, so finally, when you look at the bar graph chart, when the voter is looking at the total revenue that has come into the district, do you anticipate down the road having to potentially add all of this virtual and dual enrollment as a separate little item to reflect the fact that really, in essence, our costs did not go down because you're going to be sending the same allocation to the high schools? But it's difficult when the voter sees we have more money, but they don't then see this piece that has completely changed for school districts.
The real issue is going to be if the virtual instruction area begins to really proliferate. If that begins to get really large, then that will become a problem, because as the virtual education area, specifically in Florida Virtual School, if that expands rapidly, then that will mean more and more resources will be removed from the regular public education, and that will start having a substantial impact on us as we continue to try to provide a high level of service to those kids.
All right. So then just a final question. Dr. Jenkins, that disconcerns me, because I'm certainly an advocate of students having the opportunity to take extra virtual courses. And so I'm just curious if you anticipate having to give us some mini updates on this so that we can be very mindful, watchful of the impact, so we don't get to the end of the year with some kind of budgetary problems?
Absolutely. Ms. Moore, and I think you've touched on an issue that is dear to the heart of the Superintendent's Association as a whole. If the funding model limits students' earnings or FTE dollars to one full-time equivalency, then why would you allow them to take, let's say, six classes are just standard, every child gets money for six classes, but you also have legislation that says you will not prohibit those students from taking additional online courses beyond the sixth? Makes sense if you say they're deducting from their regular six classes in their school and taking them elsewhere, but they can take six in the school and then take additional classes as well in an online version. So what we believe would be an appropriate solution, at least most superintendents, is that you uncap the limitations of a single FTE per student. If those students are taking more than what is equivalent to one FTE, then perhaps you ought to fund them at the higher levels as well. As it stands now, districts will have to absorb those costs for either dual enrollment or for virtual classes. Dual enrollment is sort of a separate issue as well, I won't get into tonight. We're still negotiating with our state colleges. But the real issue at hand is one FTE being provided for each student, but then allowing for them to take beyond what is equivalent to one FTE. And so we'll continue to watch that. I will certainly update the board. We will need to use non-recurring reserves should it become an issue, because we can't ask schools to redo their master schedules significantly based on what they think might be potential enrollment for virtual education. We'll have to watch it and monitor it and keep you posted.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins, for that, and I do appreciate Christine bringing that up because Ms. Cadel was coming out of office in her last day. That was a major area of concern throughout the state. So Dr. Jenkins, very quickly, that's not my question, but I know it was, we covered it, so, but I was concerned, are the counselors being told and informed to try to direct the students that way? Because those courses are very rigorous now. They're not as easy as they thought. And once they get in them, a lot of the students, they come back and go back into regular schools, and they come back and say, that's a little bit hard for me, which is very rigorous. So have the counselors been instructed on what you just said a minute ago? Because that's new for us, so.
So it's a bit of a touchy situation, because you cannot prohibit students from enrolling for requesting either dual enrollment if they meet the qualifications or virtual classes. But we certainly want to be very diligent in helping to direct our students through a course progression that is going to be beneficial to them, where we think they can be successful.
And have we thought about, well, I don't know, I don't guess we can charge them either for additional, but have we looked into something like that for those that may want to go on, similar to what we were just talking about earlier? Is that something that can be done? But you don't have to answer today, but I'm just, you can check back with me on that, because that's a concern throughout. But I would like for you to go back to, I had a call tonight for three questions, and they're all right together. They're on page 20, page 21, 23, 26, and 28. And it was a couple of people in the public. The first one was on page 20. I think you could go back to it, because I think people, they want to see this, and they saw it, as you shared it. The percentage of state general revenue going to education. One more, one more. Yes. Okay. We kind of wanted, even though the money has been coming in, if we look at 2010 and we look at 2014, we are still not where we used to be. Even with all of the incomes coming in, we're nowhere where we used to be in 1985. Okay? But we are still below the level, and I think they wanted to understand, they were asking us, why are we not, with more money coming in, why are we not where we should be? Because they think that we could, but they don't understand about the state. So if you can briefly explain that, because they say they'll tune in and listen. And then the next one, go to the next one. They wanted to know that the lottery has received more money, more money, and I always told Joey and the board, this was Linda Sutherland, this was Linda Sutherland's question, and she said, and Rick remembers this as a former board member, to really let the public know about the lottery appropriation. And if you look at the green and you compare, even though it's 2014, we're still not where we were in '05, and they want you to explain why. Okay? And then if you go to, what was, the next page is 23, under appropriations, where's 23? Oh, I think Christine got that one for us. Okay. Let me get the, let me go to 20, they gave me 26. On 26 here, the digital. Okay, they were concerned, okay, this was mine, for the digital curriculum with the non-reoccurring of the 2.8 million rolled forward. Would this be used for the eight pilots, or would that, because I was a little confused there? And this is not enough money for anybody else, it's just for the eight pilots, as we spoke about in the workshop?
Let me start with that one. The digital curriculum pilot, this is the money that was not spent, or not, either spent or encumbered as of June 30th, so it rolled forward. It was part of the 10.8 million that the board, when we had the discussion about the digital pilots, the 10.8 million was the portion from the operating budget. There were also some capital dollars that were also spent for the digital curriculum pilot, but I'm talking about the general fund here. So the 2.8 is just the carryover dollars that will continue to be spent on just those pilot schools.
The seven pilot schools, which is one in each school board member district?
Yes, ma'am.
So the public can understand that. And then if you could explain those, why the lottery money, even though it's more money in the lottery and then the...
Yeah, the lottery actually began back in the mid-'80s, and so you can see, when the lottery revenue started coming in, the general revenue dollar started going out. So way back in the '80s, you can see that there was a downturn in the percentage of general revenue going towards public education. So that was being replaced directly by the lottery dollars that were coming in. So that was the shell game that you're referring to. Then the actual percentage started coming up in the mid, the end of the 1990s, 2000, around that area. Then times started getting tougher again, it started declining again. Recently, the legislature has tried to provide additional state sources of revenue because of the decline in property values. There was a substantial decline in property values. You can see 2009, 10-year, property values were still tanking, going down, so the state tried to step in and provide some additional resources out of the general revenue fund. Of course, as the property values, they were not able to sustain that, let's just put it that way. They were not able to sustain it. And now, for 2013-14, they are coming back and providing additional, a greater proportionate amount of the general revenue towards public education. But part of that is because of the commitment of the governor early on to provide the teacher salary increases for this coming year. So that, 2013-14, a large portion of that increase is directly attributable to that, it was $480 million that was devoted directly towards that purpose statewide.
And then the circle, if you go to the circle part, I remember the next question with the circle, where you have the state, the federal, I think it's 20, yeah, right there. They wanted to know, a lot of people think that we get a lot of money from Congress and our federal government. Will you explain that to them? What that little 32, .32% is? Because a lot of people think that we get a lot of money from the federal government.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, this is the money coming into the general fund, and we record some of the E-rate dollars and a few other small amounts of federal dollars into the general fund. Generally speaking, we don't record federal dollars in the general fund for basic operations. Federal dollars go over into the special revenue fund specifically to help subsidize the food service program or to pay for Title I, IDEA, all of those grants that are over there. So it is a sizable amount of money, but as far as basic operations, federal government provides a very minor role in funding basic operations.
And that's the most important part, because a lot of people think that they help to operate the schools, and a lot of it comes through our grant department also.
Yes.
But thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Ms. Cadel.
I just have one quick question, and I need you to refresh my memory. I know that our increase on our healthcare was 9.5%?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much does that equate to per employee? It's 600 and how many dollars?
Yeah, it's about $600 per employee. I don't know the exact number.
Okay.
It's the equivalent of about $13 million total.
Okay. And that, per contract, if we, as long as it doesn't reach 10%, that is what the school district absorbs to continue?
Right. Based on the contract, as long as, based on the contract, we have to contribute the first 10% before we negotiate any contribution.
And so that basically is about $600 per employee, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Roach.
Mr. Collins, could you just review the limitations on the capital renewal fund, on what that can be used for?
The capital renewal fund is intended, and Mr. Rodriguez, maybe you can help me out here too, as far as the use of the capital renewal fund, but it's my understanding, the way it was advertised, that the capital renewal dollars are intended to provide for the extension of life of the facilities that we've constructed here in Orange County. In other words, if you need to put on a roof in order to extend its life, or you need to put an HVAC system in it to extend its life, or you need to update the technology infrastructure in that facility in order to extend its life, those are all things that would be needed in order to extend the useful life of the facility. So those would be the types of things that we would be looking to use capital renewal dollars on.
Would we be able to use, when you said the technology extension, some of our older schools that are not well-equipped, don't have a lot of new computers, is it possible to use that fund to beef up their technology until we get to a point where we can get to them on the list or new list?
Well, generally speaking, the capital renewal dollars would be used for the infrastructure of the facility. If it needs to improve its wireless capacity in the facility, that would be something that would be okay. Built-in equipment, things like that would be okay. But if you're talking about actually purchasing the devices, I think... But if you're talking about actually purchasing the devices, I think that would be something that would be out of line as far as the intent of the funds.
Okay. And then also the charts you showed, the bar graphs on the big drop in revenues coming up as a result of sales tax, I would suppose, running out and the millage running out. I forgot where that graph was, but it looked like, how far apart were they? Just a year or two apart or the same? We're going to hit, talk about a cliff.
That's a cliff.
Right.
That's a huge cliff.
Yeah, this is the capital chart that shows that the money actually expires here in December of 2015. Okay? You actually have 2013, 14, and 2014, 15 fiscal years for the one mill. And then it goes away at the end of the 2014, 15 fiscal year. So it's all around the same time period. The capital millage actually expires in December of 2015. The special millage actually goes away as of the end of the 14, 15. I won't get into the details of when property taxes are collected, but it's for the 14, 15 fiscal year, that would be the last year that you would actually receive that.
Well, unless you've got rabbits in your hat, we've got some work to do.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. We have one speaker, I believe, on this topic. Ms. Moore, I have a speaker card from you. Was it on 3.01, the budget, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. I won't even bother to give you the rules, Diana, because I know you know them by heart at this point. Name an address to begin, if you could, please.
Is that part of the three minutes?
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue. As a taxpayer, I have some questions. On your website, you include the comprehensive annual financial report for the year that ended June 30th, 2013. And I know because the report's not due for, until September, that the comprehensive annual financial report that ended June 30th, 2013 is not there yet. So, I'm sorry, 2012 is there, the one that ended June 30th, 2013 is not there yet. So I went to that report to just look at page 28, which happens to be the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in our fund balances, the budget to the actual cost. And as I look at it, we had budgeted a certain amount of money, but actually spent, we budgeted 620, hold on a second, I'm going to need the glasses. We had budgeted for a lot less revenue, but yet we had $5.8 million come in over our budget and state revenues. Total money left over at the end of the year was, we had received $33 million that we hadn't budgeted for, that came in over and above what we had budgeted. Under our expenditures, we had a $239 million extra at the end of the year because we had over-budgeted expenditures. So I looked particularly at one line for instruction. And at the beginning of the year, in 2011, '12 year, we had budgeted $973 million, but we changed the budget somewhere mid-year to $958 million, but we actually spent $785 million with a leftover of $172 million. So I'm having trouble, as I listen to the new budget, understanding what happens when you have that kind of money left over. So I went to the state website where they list our financial ratio and they listed it at 28%. So my questions are the following. What is the total actual revenue that was received last year as of June 30th, 2013? And what was the total actual expenditures as of June 30th, 2013? And what happens with the money that rolls over from the prior year as you build the budget for the new year? Can you also explain that financial ratio? It went from 17% to 23% to 28%. So I want to understand that. How many teachers are receiving letters of non-remontment because of budget issues for the year? And how much are we spending on Common Core curriculum implementation? I didn't hear about that in the budget. And then just if you could help me understand the unassigned budget fund that was left over. I appreciate it. Thank you.
What we'll do, Ms. Moore, is either after the meeting or after we get through this portion of the agenda, I'll have the superintendent have Mr. Collins, when we're done with this agenda item, get with you and address some of those questions along with Mr. Howard. Is that okay with you, Superintendent Jenkins? Okay. All right. Do we have any other speakers on agenda item 3.01 or 3.02? Okay. You know, I just want to echo something that the superintendent said, and I know every board member, every time each and every one of us go out there and speak to the public, I know I'm just reiterating what we always say, which is, thank you to the taxpayers of Orange County. It always does amaze me how many folks do watch these meetings. And I think it's very, very important that they understand that we've been able to accommodate, preserving our academic programs, our athletic programs, our music, our arts, and our cultural programs because of the referendum that the voters of this county adopted three years ago now, or two, no, three years ago now, which has really helped tide us over through some of these more and more difficult times that other districts have experienced. In addition, we've been able to provide renovations now for close to 70 of our schools. We'll get through 94 of those schools before we're done. And something that often goes unsaid, we've been able to provide for the relief schools largely that we need in this county. I always point out that every time I'm out there on the stump speaking that unlike some perhaps neighboring districts, Orange County Public Schools has grown by an average of 2,000 students per year, each and every year, including during the recession. And we would have never been able to meet those student station needs without the referendum and the sales tax that the voters approved back in 2002. So on behalf of the board and the superintendent and all our teachers and all of our employees, I just want to say thank you to the voters of Orange County, Florida for valuing education to the level that you have, showing you value it through the ballot box, not once, but twice in the last 11 years. With that, Ms. Cadel, I'm going to go to you. Then I'm going to ask for two motions, one to adopt after you're done, Ms. Cadel, unless you want to do that.
I actually turned my light on to make the motion.
You're going to do it from, okay.
But it looks like we have one more speaker. Are you speaking to the budget?
Oh, we do. Okay. Let me go to Mr. Head first.
And then if you'll come to me. No.
No, he's on another minute.
No, it's a different...
Are you speaking on the budget, sir?
Yes.
No, this gentleman.
All right, Mr. Head, welcome.
Sorry.
Name and address for the record.
I didn't expect to speak. My name is Doug Head. I live at 85 Mayfair Circle in Orlando, 32003. I was struck by the question from the previous speaker about rollover monies and totals and stuff like that. And it seems like it would be good before you vote on the budget for the public to see you explain the answers to those questions rather than say, we'll get with you later. So my question is, can we have answers to those questions now, prior to voting on the budget, from the superintendent or from other staff who are presumably here and prepared to answer questions from the public?
All right, thank you, Mr. Head. All right. Out of deference to Mr. Head, I'll go ahead and answer that as he sits down. Leading up to that budget, as I think every one of the CTA representatives in here knows, and frankly, I think as Mr. Head is aware as well, we do not one, but two budget workshops. And it's been a practice of this board while I've been chairman to allow members of the public to speak during those workshops. And if there were questions in the future, that would certainly be the place to do it. The short answer to your question, Mr. Head, is this is no different than the county commission or the city council or the Florida Legislature. You know, we abide by Robert's Rules of Orders. Anybody who wants to come up and testify before the school board may testify. It's not a give-and-take process. It's not a question-and-answer session. There's a time for that and that's in the work sessions. Those rules have been uniformly applied, I think, throughout the history of this board and certainly while I've been chair for the last three years. So the simple answer is no, but I'll be certainly happy to always accommodate anybody with a question and make sure that staff gets with that person at the appropriate time, either during the meeting or afterwards, to answer the question. But I think every member of this audience could understand what our board meetings would devolve into if we were to allow any member of the public to come up and question and frankly, sometimes grill or even interrogate the board about various issues. That's not the purpose of giving testimony, is to give testimony during the three minutes that you have. So with that, are there any other speakers? Okay, Mr. Bison, did I say the name right, sir? Okay, are you here, do you want to talk about the budget, sir? Okay, well, welcome. Well, if you could come on up to the dais, or the lectern, I should say. And if you could, sir, please begin by stating your name and your address for the record and then you'll have three minutes to address the board. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Elias Bigill. I'm a taxpayer, 8215, Sunspring Circle. Basically, the question I have, first of all, the budget is, it's a 745 page as far as the one, it's a very complex, very involved. And I went through it. I didn't have a printer to print it all out, but it's very extensive. And I would imagine that if people look at it, they would definitely would want to get some information, more information as to how the money is being spent. My main question is, as I went through the budget, I noticed that a lot of schools had portables. Some had 85 portables, 32, 19. This is as far as billing new, and I don't see, or didn't hear anything about billing new schools to alleviate this. I think our schools, the need for new schools is going to increase as the population in central Florida grows. And I think it's happening. Unlike, I think, South Florida where basically it's declining, central Florida is increasing. Now, is there, has the board considered this in their budget? Are they looking forward to address this issue? This is one issue. One of the other issue had to do also, is there any money allocated to identify the homelessness, homeless children in the school system? Are there any liaisons within the school system to identify these students and work with these students to be able to provide them with their needs, fulfill their needs?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I'm going to address the portables issue, Mr., and forgive me, sir, but how do you pronounce your name?
Big Gill.
Big Gill.
Big Gill.
You know, I will share with you on my own behalf, and I think I probably speak for another number of members of the board. I abhor portables. I have three children in public school and, you know, my children have had to go to school in a portable and, you know, it's interesting to me always. I know that some teachers actually like portables, but I just think it's a terrible environment for a child to attend class. And so one of the things that we are trying to do with our construction program, within the constraints of the class size amendment, which has been a very, very difficult constraint placed upon us, is to meet our capacity needs and where possible, meet our capacity needs without portables. We also have a pretty aggressive portable replacement program and we've made a tremendous reduction. I don't know the actual percentage, but we've made a substantial reduction in the number of students going to class in our portables over the last couple of years. So your comment resonates with me personally because I do think that it's something that we have to keep our focus on is eliminating the portables out there on our campuses.
What's that?
Well, and one of the other components of that, I wasn't going to mention that, but my colleague, Mrs. Robinson, just stated it. I just didn't want to mix up issues at this time. But it's why this board has voted to have a conversation with the electorate and asked the electorate to continue the sales tax when it expires next year. Because frankly, I don't think any of us want to go back to that period in Orange County Public Schools when frankly, our campuses were so incredibly overcrowded and we had just absolutely portable farms, as I like to call them on many of our campuses. So the sales tax extension will be a big part of that. Ms. Gould, did you want to address that as well?
I wanted to point out that up on the screen are the list of schools that are coming out of the ground in the next few years. I am in the West Learning Community where we have probably the highest rate of growth in the county. And I've heard actually, one of the highest rates in the country, we're in the top 10, I'm told by some of our local economy people. And this is an issue that we address constantly, but we do have some new schools coming online. We'll have a new elementary school coming online there in the next year and then a new high school to relieve. But with the pent-up development that was out there and what we're seeing exploding in the relocating in certain areas, and some of it is new people and some of it's just kind of shifting around the county, it's going to be a challenge to stay ahead of it. There's no question about that. But I can assure you that, at least in my area, and I'm pretty sure down in the Lake Nona area too, we're looking at this every single week on the growth of what we're seeing in the county.
Mr. Roach.
I'd just like to remind everyone, this is a tentative approval of the budget. The final approval comes September.
Right.
September, board meeting. So I would, on behalf of Ms. Moore, Mr. Head, I too would like to have the answers to those questions between now and then. And I would like to invite anybody that has a question about this budget to please notify me, the boards, whoever you'd like to. I'd be happy to play a conduit role between you and Mr. Collins. He's very gracious about returning my calls and any question I would ask him, he would fire the answer back to me. And that way, don't wait till the last September meeting to come down and ask the questions, although you're welcome to. But I think if we can get all those done ahead of time, it would be a lot easier for everyone. But I'm more than happy to provide those answers and I think they're good questions and I certainly would like to make sure that we have the answers to those. Thank you.
You know, and Mr. Roach, I want to say thank you for saying that because that's an important point. This is a preliminary approval and, you know, I want to make it clear that any member of the public, including especially a member of the CTA, who asks questions about the budget, no matter how detailed, and those were some detailed questions that we had received, we will always certainly make sure that staff gets with them and provides answers to those questions. Dr. Jenkins, can you address the homeless issue? I know we were just talking about that this morning and what we're trying to do to accommodate our homeless populations.
Certainly, we have means of identifying our homeless families in our schools, registrars, and folks in our front offices are trained and there's an actual form at the point of registration that parents and families fill out that give us key indicators when a family might be struggling from homelessness. And then within our Title I office, we have liaisons, we have staff that supervise our homeless program. There are federal resources that help administer that program as well as some community partnerships that provide tremendous resources for our homeless families. So there is a department and an individual that tracks that information. And in fact, in case anyone's interested, we're just over the 7,000 mark for central Florida, for Orange County's homeless families.
6,000 has gone up.
Yeah. And five years ago, that number was what, Dr. Jenkins?
1,200.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, around 1,200.
Around 1,200. So a six-fold increase in five years. Mr. Roach.
You know, I, that was a great question and I got a little ahead of you. I spent about a half a day with district staff who took me around to a couple of the homeless locations over there. And you would expect to see, you expect to see shelter and I didn't see that. Matter of fact, I was very impressed by, just down the road here on maybe Washington Street West is a, actually a private institution that was so impressive. Three of our teachers were there, teaching these kids, these pre-K kids. But they really, there's a lot of outreach in the homeless area. We are a partner in that process. And it's one of the proudest things, I believe, I've seen in a long time, that we really, reaching out to those kids. I went over to Howard Middle School. We have a program there and it's duplicated about 32 times around the county, I think, I think that's the number, where these homeless children come in and had these very enriching programs. Boy, I wish we had this curriculum in our own schools. Kids are writing articles and they're putting them on radio broadcasts simulated. Anyway, it was really neat to see that. They have competitive athletic teams during the summer and they mix them with kids who have a home. So it's kind of an inclusive situation. I did not know this. You can be in this town for 30 years and still find these nuggets of gold out there. So this community is very rich with beneficiaries toward this, contributors toward this homeless situation, probably not near enough, but I thought it was impressive to share that with you. That... If you want, if you've got a couple hours somewhere during the week, get our staff to take you around to a few places, it really is an eye-opener. I thought I knew some stuff about it, but I learned a lot more. It's very impressive, and thanks for your comments.
All right. Ms. Cadel. And Dr. Jenkins.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was only going to make one comment based on what you said earlier. I did want the board to know, we have, staff has responded in the past, without any additional intervention, to quite an extensive list of questions that were provided from the union. We're happy to respond to those as well.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Cadel.
And all we need is, we need them in writing, so we know what we're responding to. So, if Ms. Moore could share those in writing with us, it'd be great to be able to respond to them. Mr. Collins, if I remember correctly, we have to read the millage into the record, correct?
That would be the, out of an abundance of caution, that would be fine.
Got it covered, not a problem. I move that board adopt the following millage for the operation of Orange County Public Schools during the 2013-14 fiscal year. Required local effort, 5.114. Basic discretionary, .748. Additional voted, 1.00. Capital improvement, 1.5000. For a total of 8.362.
All right. It's been moved to adopt the proposed millage as referenced in Agenda Item 3.01 under recommended resolution and the amounts delineated by Ms. Cadel. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Show that resolution adopted. All right. Ms. Cadel, do you have another motion on 3.02?
I would be happy to read that into the record. This is the proposed tentative budget. I move the adoption of it, and it is as follows. Approve the 2013-14 tentative budget for the general fund, $1,766,671,656. Approve the 2013-14 tentative budget for the special revenue fund of $119,729,785. Approve the 2013-2014 tentative budget for the depth service fund, $204,405,510. Approve the 2013-14 tentative budget for the capital projects fund, $1,309,933,708. Approve the 2013 tentative budget for the internal service fund for $260,630,758. And approve the date for the final public hearing for the fiscal year 1314 budget for 5:30 PM on September the 10th, 2013, at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center, 445 West Amelia Street, Orlando, Florida.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Gordon.
I second this, all of the resolutions that were read by Mrs. Cadel.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Cadel and seconded by Mrs. Gordon. The proposed resolution is found in the agenda at Item 3.02. Is there any debate on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted, and resolution adopted.
Mr. Chairman, and thank you to whatever elementary school teacher taught me all those places, so I could read those numbers properly.
I was like, oh, this is going back to elementary school, to figure out how that happens.
It's a lot of digits.
A billion.
Okay. We are now on our consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? You know, I'm going to push my button. I do have one. There's an item on the consent agenda, and I will share with you, board members, I've given the superintendent a heads-up that I have a concern about, and it's Item 14.02. I'm fine with it, I'm going to vote for it, but Superintendent Jenkins, I would just ask that you or your area superintendent, whomever you feel is the appropriate person, sit down and discuss this matter, as I believe you may have already done, with the principal involved and with the coach involved. Because candidly, I just wanted to be impressed upon them what a serious matter this is. As I shared with you before the meeting, I don't think taxpayers pay tax dollars to resolve issues of this nature with somebody who continues to be an employee of the district. And I just have been very, very concerned with it. So, I think we're making the right decision. I think council has given us a good recommendation. I don't think we had any choice. But at the same time, I would just feel a degree of comfort if those two individuals were spoken to, and that they knew that that came directly from the board. So, thank you for indulging me in that request. All right. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda? It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right. We are now on non-consent items, and before we go to 16.01, if no board members have any objection, I'm going to go straight to, well, I don't know if I can do that, I don't want to get us out of parliamentary procedure, or out of correct process here. Board members, we are now on 16.01, which is requesting approval of the resolution of the School Board Leasing Corporation, as delineated there in your agenda. I'm not going to read the whole paragraph. At this time, I will recess our board meeting and convene the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated June 25th, 2013. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? It's been moved by Mrs. Cadel. Is there, Ms. Cadel, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gordon. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 25, 2013, of the Leasing Corporation, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Show those minutes adopted. All right. The next item is requesting approval of the resolution, and I think I probably do have to read this, don't I, Mr. Collins, just to put us in the right posture? All right, so bear with me, board members. The next item is requesting approval of the resolution of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation authorizing the amendment and restatement of Schedule 1997-1 to the master lease and execution of related documents for the purpose of converting the interest portion of basic lease payments represented by the Series 2008E certificates from a weekly rate mode to an index-floating rate mode, and the direct purchase of such Series 2008E certificates by PNC Bank NA for the initial three-year period, or if the consent of UBS AG, the provider of the interest rate exchange agreement, entered into a connection with the issuance of the Series 2008E certificates, cannot be obtained in a timely fashion, the extension of the 2008E letter of credit provided by Wells Fargo Bank NA for an additional three-year period expiring on September 8, 2016. So, what I'd like to ask board members, if I could have a motion to adopt what I just described.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Roach, and y'all will chuckle at this if you have a sense of humor.
We got it.
I have here from Mr. Collins, Bill, here is plain language for your understanding. I could read that as well, but I'm not sure I understand that plainly.
You're used to it by now.
All right. Mr. Collins, I'm going to rely on you. Has that put us in the legally correct posture to your satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded as stated by me, the resolution of the Orange County School Board, and that, by the way, is restated in our agenda item under 16.01.
Right.
In case it's ever questioned. So, is there any debate on that?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. All right. With that, I will adjourn the meeting of the Leasing Corporation and reconvene our regular school board meeting. All right. All right, Mr. Rodriguez.
Board members, just two items to discuss with you this evening. First is, you have on the agenda the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee's report. We did meet last night, and I know that they will have to come back and reconvene. One of the members called in sick, and so, we failed to reach quorum, but they will be voting on that. It was circulated with the committee members. We're also doing this in compliance with our policy, which says that they shall provide the board with a report. I will advise you that Ms. Palmer, who I know is leaving us, has done an exemplary job of making sure that this committee not only met regularly, but that they were given all of the materials, that they were given presentations which were voluminous, and the committee took their responsibilities, has taken their responsibilities, very seriously. We are in the process now, and you'll, I'll brief you either individually or over the next couple of weeks, over the process of appointing new individuals for that committee, or if you want to retain the folks that are on there, we can have a discussion on their participation during the last two years. One thing we're also going to recommend as a policy change is that we stagger the members, because as we come here at the end of the first two years, we find that all eight members are up for renewal. That's probably not a very good governance model. So, four of you will be appointing a one-year term, four of you will be appointing a two-year term, and then, in subsequent years, every year, you will only be reappointing as a board, four new members, in theory. The other provision that's not stated in the policy is that you should allow for board members to replace individuals midterm, if that's the prerogative of the board member. It is a voluntary position, but at the end of the day, if a new board member comes on board, or if there's a reason for a change, for example, we had one of our members that was sick, there's really no provision for substitutions or replacements. That sort of needs to be included, at least to allow the board to have the discretion to do that in writing, and the individual would know that. But overall, the committee has met, like I said, and we will be giving you information on the replacement. The second topic, before I move to that, is there's any questions with the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee?
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you. I would like to recommend to the board to follow the same pattern that we follow with the Community Action Board, with Mr. Roach and I have sat on, and I'm going to tell you why, because with Ms. Kathleen Palmer in that position, at times, as you stated, there were times that some of the members could not come. And I like the idea that you're suggesting to stagger time with some, but I'm also going to suggest that we each have alternates, because when I cannot make the Community Action Board, there is an alternate. And that happens, and then we have 100% attendance from that district. And so many times, the information is so important, and this is an important committee to the board and to the community, because it's the catalyst that's going to keep it together, and we don't know what the future board is going to do with it, unless we make it, well, it's in our policy that we would have it, but we don't know what the future board is going to do in years to come. So, I would like to offer, Mr. Chairman, a suggestion that we have an alternate, and my person, I would like to exchange that person because of medical reasons, and I already spoke with the superintendent and Ms. Palmer in reference to it. But my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and the board members, would be that we have that member, and then that alternate, and it doesn't put a lot of pressure. And even if both of them are there, whereas when we're at the Community Action Board, sometime all the alternates are there, and it makes for better communication and making judgment calls in the future.
I certainly don't oppose that, and I think it's a good idea. Can we do that within the legal constraints of the Unitary Status Agreement?
Absolutely. What we'll do is, we'll, again, the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee was a model that was adopted by this board. It's not a requirement of the settlement agreement. This is clearly an additional measure to sort of safeguard and make sure that the community had confidence that the school district was adhering to the settlement agreement. So, it's yours to fashion as you wish, and I think it's an excellent recommendation by Ms. Gordon. It would also alleviate any issues in the future, I think, in terms of quorum, because now you invite both to every meeting. If the regular participant isn't there, you know that their alternate is there, and so, that will ensure greater participation. So, I think it's, we can certainly accommodate that within our purview and our mission.
Okay. I don't think we need a formal motion on that. Does anybody have any opposition to that? All right, we'll do it, then.
We'll submit that as part of the changes. And the second item I had was, I know that you have received correspondence, perhaps, on an upcoming ethics seminar that's coming up, that's sponsored by the Attorney General's Office and the Commission on Ethics. There's also some literature that's floating out there regarding your obligations, and how FSBA plans to meet those obligations. I think they're going to plan to make sure you have four hours of ethics credits in your training. What I would share with you is, the seminar being held here locally in Orlando is statewide. I believe it's 200 and something dollars to attend, but I have had consultation with the Attorney General's Office, and what they've informed me is, for board members, it is not, it is more extensive than what you would need to adhere to the requirements, but if you cannot attend, for example, an FSBA meeting, and you need to obtain credits, this would certainly be a replacement, because it happens to be in our backyard, I think it's a good alternative. The other option, too, is that when you're signed up for that seminar, while it encompasses, I think, three days, portions of one day, all day on another day, and another portion of the Friday, the requirements that you would need to fulfill are simply four hours or four credits. So, you do not need to feel obligated to attend all eight hours or 10 hours, whatever's being offered. I am going to have, I'm going to probably be in attendance for the meeting in its entirety. I'll probably have members of my staff in attendance, as well as others, because I do think it's critical for us to get all of that information from a legal perspective. But if you have any questions about fulfilling your obligations, particularly if you don't plan to go to an FSBA meeting in the next year, please come see our office, let me know. We can also look for other opportunities for you to fulfill your ethics credits, so.
Mr. Chairman, right, okay, I thought that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I thought that Mr. Rodriguez was going to look into doing that for us, and are either bringing someone in for us, so that we can all just do it together.
We looked at that initially, Ms. Gordon, and we can still do that. We can even petition, the state has not yet identified, and they may never identify, what is required to comply with the four hours. In other words, they haven't said, this is what you must teach, which is good, because it leaves it open-ended. But my understanding was that, given that FSBA has taken the first lead in saying, we're going to provide four hours of credit, and then, given that we have this other program here locally, if we can't meet your needs with one of those two programs, then come talk to us, and we'll fashion something else. We do have, I think, until July 1st of next year, as I understand it, to meet your four-hour requirements, so we've got plenty of time. But we will certainly provide that service locally if we need to.
Have been looking to it.
And if we were going to do that, what I would suggest is, we probably wait until the October session, because then I'll get all the materials from them and just pick out the best four hours, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. And you know, it had been my intention, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Cadel to comment from the FSBA, but it had been my intention to have this as a retreat agenda topic, some options for our ethical requirement that's new. Ms. Cadel.
I will be traveling to Tallahassee on August the 11th for a planning session for the December conference. The way we're looking at it right now is that there would be a four-hour ethics training the day before the conference begins in the afternoon, so it would just mean one hotel night. It would be, you know, similar to what we usually pay for a four-hour training from FSBA. I will know specifically when I come back. There also has been some talk, and if you notice, FSBA has been trying to do regional things, and Orlando is sort of regional, so if they decide to do regional training, I have offered this as a site for them to do training. And so, if they decide to take the regional route, you know, the regional approach, my guess is, one of the sessions would be here in Orlando. So, you know, hold tight. I will know something on August 12th, when I come back from that planning meeting, but it is something we've been talking about. We know that our members statewide need it to meet the requirement, and we know we need to do it low cost.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. All right. Where are we at? Report by the superintendent, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three things briefly. First of all, I wanted to stress to the board some information that came out with the school grades information, that we had further review around, and no, we're not talking about the three-point. And no, we're not talking about the three points that we're looking for. That's still under investigation. What we are most thrilled about is, I think I told you that we were not included amongst the lowest-performing schools. We have zero schools on the lowest 100 list. You just need to know, that's quite a feat, because we are the only large urban district without any schools. In fact, our neighboring district, who normally would not have schools, has someone on that list, and so we are quite pleased that, you know, they have one school. So we're quite, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we are quite pleased that we have zero in comparison to other large districts, and some of our neighbors as well. So very pleased about that. I want to also note, 60% of our schools that are A and B, we will continue to commend and celebrate. That's higher than the 55% at the state level, but we are also quite concerned and have plans going forward, in fact, plans almost complete, for those schools that have the greatest needs, that will come under our School Transformation Office. Secondly, I have good news to share regarding our PDS online modules that we offer to our teachers this summer. On July 31st, they will have deposited in their account their first payments. Over 7,000 teachers have taken advantage of our PDS online. We are extremely pleased with that now, and it's not over. They still have opportunities. Those that take classes between now and August 9th will be paid in September, but the first group will get their payment for those online courses. If you recall, we, the board agreed to make that provision from nonrecurring funds to invest in our teachers this summer, to help them catch up and get stabilized on all the reforms that were coming their direction. I want to thank the board again, and wanted to report to you, we had just over 7,000 teachers already collecting on that. And then lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't take the first opportunity to note how much Kathy Palmer will be missed as my Chief of Staff. Since this is her last board meeting, I want to say publicly how pleased we have been with her service to this district, not just as Chief of Staff, but as an educator, as a highly respected principal and executive area director. She will be greatly missed, hard to replace, although she has been grooming Kathy Pope for me. I want to thank her personally for her service to Orange County Public Schools and to our students. Thank you, Kathy.
Speech.
Speech, speech.
All right, you've turned on a spigot. Dr. Ja, well, go ahead, because we were going to do a round of accolades for you, but go ahead. Let's start with the speech. That's even better. And then we have cake, and everybody has to have, come have cake in the back after this. Ms. Palmer.
I would like to tell you what a wonderful, wonderful career I've had. It's been 39 years for me as an educator, and 30 of them have been in Orange County. I could not ever work for a better county, could not work for a better system, and I have loved it. I have worked with many, many, many wonderful people who have just taught me lots and lots of things, from the time I started till the time I've ended. And I just wish you all the best. I know you're going to get the Broad Prize. We deserve it, because we're there. You know, we're working our way toward that goal. But you all have been wonderful to me. It's been wonderful working with you. I want to thank my direct reports and all of you that I've come in contact with. It has been a great ride, and I thank you.
Well, I'm going to make some comments, but I also want to make a comment on something on the agenda that we approved tonight, and so you just tell me when it's appropriate to do that.
You know what I'd like to do is, let's do this, because it's going to ruin it if we do committee reports after we do the accolades, because I think we all want to say something about Ms. Palmer, because we're all so fond of her. So let's do this. Let me go to whatever you have to say, and then let's go to committee reports and get the business in the meeting out of the way.
And then we can celebrate.
And then anybody who would like to, you know, pay some tributes, as I would like to, and I think we all would, to Ms. Palmer. Let's do that, then. That way, we can go straight from there to cake, which is the way you should do it.
I feel like Scrooge, that I need to say something, but you know, I asked for an appointment with Mr. Morris, because I had heard some chatter out in the community about hard-bidding schools. And so I asked for a meeting with Mr. Morris, and you know, it's interesting, when we put out the bid for Ocoee Millis, Ocoee Elementary and Pine Lock Elementary, when you look at the difference in the price from the low bid of $21,462,243, and the high bid of $23,775, it's amazing how close all of those businesses came in. And most of those people who are listed there are people who have already built schools for us. They have a track record with us. So while I know that we don't want to go to all hard bid at this point, the fact that we still have some that are out there being done the way we used to do it, and we've tried this new way, I just really want to put a hats off to the Facilities Department. Also, maybe Ms. Moore has two schools opening this year. Do you have two schools opening in your district? I have one, I have two, and I have driven the facility staff bonkers, because I drive around on the weekends and look. And so I just want to say that the Facilities Team has done a superb job of getting these schools open, ready to go. I spent time this week visiting both Brookshire and Arbor Ridge. The faculties are excited, the schools look like we expect them to look. It's like, they wanted to take me to the media center, and I'm like, oh, okay. And I went to the media center, and it looks like all the other media centers. Yeah, well, pretty much, well, they have the same equipment in them, and the computer lab looks the same in my two elementary schools. So, you know, I just want to say that thank you for the response, thank you for changing when we're opening these schools, because Union Park Middle, I'm not sure we were going to get it opened. I mean, they, I think they spent the weekend there, making sure everything was ready to open it. So I just want to say, it's been a great experience with both of these schools and the community. And what's really interesting is, the Waterford community had the exact same questions that the Audubon Park community had about going to a swing site that is next to a high school. And, you know, I had to answer some pretty hard questions when we were moving Arbor Ridge over there. But now the Arbor Ridge PTA and their leadership group has taken the Waterford leadership group under their wings and said, "We had the same concerns, and let me tell you what's happened and how it's worked and everything." So, you know, I think we're kind of building that community support, too, that we really wanted to have, and there was a lot of fear about going to school. There used to be a ninth-grade center right next to the high school, and we have the parents telling how much better it was to have their children off of the site, how great it is to be at a swing site and get away from the construction. And I think that's very positive for us, as we start moving forward, when we have more and more parents that are talking about the success of the building. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. And also, we're pretty popular on Facebook today, because the Corner Lake community has started chattering about the professional flyer that they got from Orange County Public Schools, encouraged them to coming to meet the teacher for, to find out how to use the digital curriculum. And so, you know, I was just looking at Facebook today, and they had started talking about it, and we were getting kudos for it, which, I love it whenever the parents start the conversation, and there's kudos going on.
Thank you. Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you for my report. It is 19.01. It is to the school board members, superintendent, deputy soup, area soup, and the general counsel. And basically, I recently attended the following conferences and community events, the National School Board Association, 2013 Southern Regional Conference in Destin, and I have placed for you, the agenda, all of the presentation, and the links to the keynote speaker website is available, but just kind of ignore the keynote speaker. It was one of the unbelievable ones. You'll see it when you see his demonstration here, but I put an open link there for everyone. But he's very well sought after, and everybody seemed to love the message that he was giving us. I also attended the National NAACP 104th Annual Convention, and I'm not going to go into that. I put the, I had mail to go on and get the website, where you can see all of the famous speakers that came in and spoke to us. It was held here in Orlando, and I thanked everybody. I was on the host committee, had an opportunity to thank everybody at the door for coming to Orlando and supporting our schools with their sale tax money. And then had the opportunity to participate in Senator Marco Rubio's Haitian Outreach, and it was his constituent service day. We were able to pass out quite a bit of information for registration, and Ms. Mel Miller Smith and the staff, along with Dylan Thomas, they got together souvenirs, and everything was given to the Haitian community in Creole, and it was also translated in English, and they were very grateful. Remind me that I do have several Haitian Creoles that's interested in employment, and generally, board members, you know, we do not hire and get people hired, give them a job, but I do want you all to remind me that I need to get those names over to you, that they are interested in working in the school system, and I did get a list of those names. And there were 15 people that came and were interested in employment, and we were able to help and direct them. I also brought back for you a little souvenir. This is going to be the last Southern Region, and you all know how I love the Southern Region. I love that Southern Region. I've also been able to be the Southern Region Director for the National Black Caucus of the National School Board Association for quite some time, and we were able to have a wonderful workshop, but this is going to be the last, but however, Sunny Savoy, the former president of the National School Board Association, would like to meet with the superintendent and this board. They feel that they need to form a Southern Region, because NSBA is going to do like the rest, and only the executive officers and elected officers will be able to come, but this is where we get all of our training. So they have asked to meet with the superintendent and board members that are interested, in order for them to form a Southern Region of the 13 southern states, and we are powerful and we are strong. Okay, so this is the last place we're going to be, in Savannah, Georgia, so if you're interested, mark your calendar. I also brought back you a little souvenir from the Panhandle, a little thimble that you have. I usually try to bring you something back, and I brought back to, for Ms., I think for you Chairman Soblet, and Ms. Flynn, Ms. Moore, and Ms. Robinson, you weren't with us on this one. Okay, I remember you in Tampa, but I brought you all back a nice little booklet of how beautiful San Destin was in the rain. So I brought that little booklet back for you guys, and I hope you enjoy, but thank you for sending me. The other two conferences didn't cost you anything, but the regular conference did cost the board for Ms. Cadel and Mr. Roach and Ms. Gould and myself. But no, not Joey, because Joey goes right, because on the board of directors, generally, they pay for us, but with Joey being the outgoing president, she did not have to pay. So that was really good, and that was a little part of our budget for our ongoing training. And then I just thank you. It was just a joy, meeting other board members, and I learned so much, which I always bring back, and then we do that in our districts and in our schools. So thank you so very much, and that's my report.
And Mr. Soblet.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Ms. Cadel.
We had two present, at the Southern Region, they invited different people to present. We were two of the presenters, and the word around the conference was, if you don't do anything else, you have to go see social media, which was done by Jason Smith and Eric Lundman from East River High School. And the Fund Education Now ladies, Linda Corbett, Kathleen Oropesa, and then Melissa Erickson were all there, and they did a fabulous job. It was so good that NSBA is thinking about bringing them to New Orleans to do a session, and we're now talking to the Council of Great City Schools, seeing if they want to bring them because of their advocacy efforts, and so they may be invited to go to Albuquerque. So we were well represented at Southern Region, and it was the talk, everyone's, and I mean, they even stood from the podium. If you haven't gone to these two sessions, you need to go hear them. So kudos to everyone who made that happen. We were well represented, and people were impressed with all that we're doing.
All right, yes, Ms. Gould.
But if it's later, it won't make any sense. Sorry. You know, Dr. Brown, I thought was a very imaginative and impressive speaker. He was the first keynote speaker, but he's written a book on some soft skills, and I haven't read it yet, but it's kind of the how-to to bring soft skills to our schools that make kids' career and college ready. And so as we read it, I would like to share it with all of you as well, and maybe that is something that we could do in partnership with our local chambers. I'm going to talk to the West Orange Chamber about that, because I'm constantly asked by business leaders, "How can I help? I don't have a lot of time, but I would give some time, but I need it structured." And the other side of what they say is, "We need people that have the skills to be able to walk in and at least know how to do some basic things in managing their time, turning on a computer, and knowing the basic Microsoft Office, and how to present themselves." So that may be something we can look at at a future date.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Mrs. Gordon, or have you already gone?
I've gone.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore.
Gordon, let me tell you where we're at.
Excuse me, on the agenda, we're still on committee reports, and as soon as I hear, I think the last one I have is legislative committee by Ms. Flynn, and then as soon as I.
I don't really get it, because I gave it.
You already gave it already? Okay, good. And we're done with that, then as soon as I get through Ms. Moore here, the next speaker, then we're going to go to statement of policy-level issues that you all would like to agenda, and we're going to talk about the work session schedule. Ms. Moore.
I had just two comments. One in response to Mrs. Cadel's discussion of facilities. Been very busy with where we are on the list in District 7 with schools, and so it's been rewarding as we get close to opening. The one that I am pretty active with right now is the Hackney Prairie Relief Site in Ocoee, and we have done a tremendous amount of outreach with staff, to the city of Ocoee Tours, getting ready to take the two county commissioners over, and the head neighbors who had known of a lot of the controversy early on with the project, now asking to have tours. So it's just been a tremendous thing, and the Public Relations Department has been working to highlight when we have a new relief school to the entire community, and ensure that they realize that we're grateful to them, and that they have the opportunity to come see the facility, regardless if they have children or grandchildren at the school. So I think that continues to be a very positive aspect of, or CPS reaching the community with the new facility. So I do thank and congratulate John Morris and even Dylan Thomas's shop for helping us with all the, you know, the publicity surrounding openings. Finally, Dr. Jenkins, there was an item on tonight's agenda, and I had staff come and talk to me about VPK, where we are the agent to hire someone for monitoring for DOE, you know, the effectiveness, because there was, you know, a substantial number of low-performing VPK providers. And so we, it was at my request last year, we did a work session on VPK, and then I asked them today. I still, perhaps it's just something I could meet with staff or yourself later, you know, I was just interested in how we can continue to expand our VPK programs, because it just hardly goes by without me hearing from parents who really, truly want to be with us. And I know the problem is the funding mechanism, for the principals have to advertise so far out, and you have to get to the 20 in the class, and it's a half-day program, which is problematic for so many of our families. So at some point, it's just, you know, we hear that there's that many low performing, but they need to be full day, and I know we're working on funding through the And I know we're working on funding through the strategic, the philanthropic strategic plan, but I just, you know, if there's some follow-up this year that we can continue to do, it just breaks my heart when I know we have maybe six or seven kindergarten units in a school, and we're maybe even have one or zero VPK. And going into Common Core standards, I think the robust strength of the VPK is really what's going to help this district continue to be high performing. So I don't know. We brainstormed today. I just want to continue to highlight that as something that's really important to me, and if you have any comments, I'd love to hear them.
Ms. Moore, I think you raise a critical issue, and that is why it made the top list for our philanthropic strategic plan, because funding is an issue. If you do not offer it as a full-time program, then certainly families who might need it most are unable to make that sacrifice of coming to pick up a child halfway through the day or to bring them for the second half of the day if that be the case. And so the funding will be critical. I think, secondly, we have to continue to monitor. We need high-quality VPK, and we can monitor and control that better if it's under our auspices. We do also have some resources that go out into the daycare centers and try to help them as well, and the state team will provide that assistance and those resources. But we want to make sure we have some quality input by having more under our control. And the PSP will get us there, and in the meantime, will be as creative as possible to try to have that impact.
All right. Board members, I've handed out the work session schedule. You'll be blessedly happy to hear that we do not have near as ambitious work session schedule yet that we had last year, and hopefully we can try to keep it that way. First of all, we have a rule development workshop coming up on a number of issues on August 20. Then we have our board retreat on August 29. Location's still to be determined, but it'll be somewhat easily accessible. Then we have a work session, and I would ask Dr. Jenkins' staff and Mr. Rodriguez's staff to also look at these carefully to make sure that they're aware that these are coming up as well. We have a work session on September 3 on magnet schools, innovation schools, and on gifted programs. Then we have three consecutive work sessions currently scheduled for six-hour blocks. Hopefully, we won't need all those on charter school applications. I'm curious, Dr. Jenkins, do we know how many applications we have yet, or when's the deadline? We're not at the deadline yet, are we?
August 1st.
August 1st, okay. Well, we'll know tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow's the 3rd or 1st.
Thursday, okay.
I wanted to point out, Mrs. Cadel and I, just like we'll be gone September 10 for the board meeting, we'll also be gone for that September 12 charter school.
Yeah, and you've let me know that. Thank you.
So you just need to know, make sure you have a quorum.
We will. And frankly, I would move it if we could, that one, because of the absence of you all, but we have a deadline. We have to get through those. I don't remember the date, but I think by October 1. If we have fewer applications than we're anticipating, then what we'll do is we'll cancel the September 12 one and just have it on the 17th and the 26th. Then we have expanding our language offerings and school maintenance, then we have teacher recruitment and minority achievement initiatives, then we have digital curriculum, then we have CEAs and concurrency mitigation. Then we have two very important ones that I know is on the board's radar screen, but I don't think it's hit. So do those who watch us from outside their radars yet, but we have the Evergreen Report coming on, our ESE programs. It's a report commissioned by this board and the superintendent to give us recommendations and an evaluation of our ESE programs, and I personally find that to be a very important work session. And then we have a similar-type report coming, again commissioned by the board and the superintendent, called the Metis Report on our English Language Learner Program. So those are two very important work sessions policy-wise coming up. And then it's way back in January, but the middle of January, we have a work session coming up on CTE Programs Alignment and Delivery. So not on this list that we need to add on here, just as an FY, our DEF School Improvement Plans Work Session that we do every year. We're going to try to streamline that, but I think it's important that we do that and continue to do it. And then I've made a note to myself to speak to the superintendent on relooking again at our Title I tutoring service providers. We have some more flexibility this year to be more selective in who we choose with the legislation that was passed last session, and I know that's been an interest of this board, a number of our SES funding, supplemental education services funding. So with that, Mr. Roach, I know you had some policy issues.
Yeah, a point of clarification, first of all. You may have done, I may have just blended it in there. The September 3 Innovation Schools, is that, you mentioned that once at the board. Would all of us be able to put the input into that? Is that what you--
Please do.
--have that locked up into a presentation? Okay, because I have some couple ideas I wanted to throw out at that point.
Okay. And you know what? On any of these, I mean, nobody will ever accuse you all of being shy. Just go to Ms. Simmons or, Ms. Simmons, it's a client, am I forgiving? Ms. McGill, or, you know, Ms. Miller Simmons or Ms. Rivera, and let them know that you want to be part of making sure what issues are you want addressed and those work sessions are addressed, okay?
That's great.
Because what they do, and I know this has always been the way you all do, it's nothing novel, but I always ask them and the superintendent, ask whoever's in charge of putting together that work session, to go to each board member and say, are there any topics you want addressed in this? So I would love more and put the mayor on innovation schools in particular. Mrs. Gordon, Mr. Roach, are you done?
Well, I've got a policy thing I want to come up with. Can she finish?
Go ahead, go ahead. You're cute.
Let's finish the work session thing first.
Okay.
Well, okay, I'm just tagging on to Mr. Roach with the, like, with the innovation schools, because I just asked him about that. Well, we also get an explanation. I was talking with Dr. Kathy Schula in reference to the transformation, because there's so many things happening so quickly, and schools are being pulled out, and they are up under one person, and then because grades came in, they're up under another. So I'm wondering about where would the, I'm concerned about that, and also I'm concerned about suspension and expulsion, that we, our kids not continue to be expelled and kicked out, and we say bye-bye, and we don't have anywhere for them to go. And that was the purpose of taking a look at what Osceola had as related to, in lieu of expulsion. They are expelled, and they might have on their little chain, but their little ankle bracelet and stuff. But I think the parents are asking us to not allow their children, they want them to graduate from Orange County public schools. So I do feel that that needs to be in here. We should not let that die. If not, we're going to be voting them back in, and then they have violated our policies, and our hearts going to be saddened, Rick Hart's going to be saddened again. And I really want us to work on this, because that's important. That's important. And then also, somewhere in here, put the transformation schools and how that's going to work, because I don't think that has been explained to me. It's been explained a little bit, but I don't think the board has had a formal presentation of the transformation schools. And I know you all have given Dr. Lawson an opportunity to get the minority achievement gap together. So is that the one for October 3?
It is. And we will address the transformation schools at that one.
All right. Now, let me ask you this. This is very important. Y'all listen to me now. I'm putting on my teacher cap. If you're not talking about the D and the F schools in August, forget it.
Yeah.
And let me tell you why. Because when we go back August 12, those kids are going to be coming in August 19. We've already kicked off our study. And we as a board have no directions in giving the superintendent of where we want to see these D and F schools. Remember, the last time we did it, we waited till the end, and then we brought all the principals in, and they promised us what they were going to do, and they didn't do it. Not everybody. It wasn't any improvement. We have got to get with the superintendent and help set the pace. You've got to get your program together. It needs to be done. It really should have been done in July. I'm just being honest, because when those teachers come back and we hit, we have certain things, we have FCAT one more year. We have certain things that we have to cover in the month of August, September, October. You can forget it, because you should have hit practically all your skills. November is review, January is review, and then you're getting ready for your February and March. So if we keep putting it down the line, we're going to miss the boat, and we're going to have more Ds and F schools next year. I really would like to see us work on the weakest link. We really need to get one thing and focus on that. You cannot reach all, but if you get in, and we as a board, as we did in past years, focus on the weakest link, and we even worked with business partners to come in and help us focus on the weakest link. That may be our role in making sure that those schools, that are those D and F. We have too many of them right now. We have two Fs and lots of Ds, and that doesn't sit so good with me at all. So I really would like to see, Mr. Chairman, if you could go back and move those schools back up, and we see how we can help those principals be at their best the end of August.
Okay.
They will have a goal to work on, and knowing Dr. Jenkins, they probably already have that, but we as a board got to give them directions to help them get to where they want to go.
No, it's a very good point. I'll work with Dr. Jenkins on the scheduling of that. I know one of the drivers in the past has been the completion of their school improvement plans, and I'm not sure when those are completed, but we will definitely look at the timing of that. I will say, in championing our principals, only because I'm a little bit anal this way, I have tracked over three years the schools that were a DF school and what their school grade was the next year. We've had very few, in fact, I can't even think of any off the top of my head. Some board members could probably help me, because you know your schools in your district better than I do. We have had very few frequent flyers. I'm not even sure if we've had any. In other words, any school that's been a DF, say in 2011 and 2012, our batch of DF schools was a different batch of schools, and all those were DFs. The previous went up. So they do go up and down, but I've been pleased that I haven't seen any repeats. I think there's one or two exceptions. There's been one or two exceptions to that.
I'm a rollercoaster.
Yeah.
And those are the schools that are your transformation, those are the schools that are your minority achievement gap.
Yeah. Well, I hear you loud and clear. I'll go with Dr. Jenkins. Did you want to say something, Dr. Jenkins, on the timing and--
Actually, two things. I wanted to clarify. First of all, certainly, Ms. Gordon's comments are right on time. I want to reassure this board, we have already had our initial meetings with those schools, and we are moving forward. The School Transformation Office is very similar to what we had years ago when there was a central learning community, except there are extensive resources through our Title I department that will now be even further invested with some central support for those schools. And in your board update, there's actually a list of those 20 schools as well, but we'll be happy to get with board members to give them more detail. I've got a question on innovation schools, because I may have misunderstood what the board intended. There's actually legislation about innovation schools of choice, and that's what we were planning for. Christopher Bernier was planning to go through that information with the board when we talk about innovation schools. If we need to prepare something different or make a provision for board members to talk about ideas for different schools of choice, then we can certainly make that provision. But there's legislation for innovation schools of choice that we wanted to share with you on that date. And Dr. Bernier, also, Ms. Gordon has been on top of the model from Osceola County. That is in preparation for discussion that day as well, from the Osceola County model compared to what we offer in alternative ed in our current Excel program. So that is already included as well.
Board members, is that consistent with what you were thinking? You know, for me, on the magnets and innovation schools, Dr. Jenkins, and I think I'm saying the same thing, it was to hear a continuance of our discussion that we started about eight months ago on what I call, I know not all staff calls this, but ideas for zoneless magnet schools, you know, and continuation of that, or what I think are, have been called by the legislature, innovation schools. So are they two different concepts?
Different, yeah. But the magnet school discussion will be a continuation of what the board has been discussing. Innovation schools separate.
Mr. Roach, did you ever get to your issue of policy?
I am right now. I wanted to tell you that one of your teachers is injured. My wife, of course, had foot surgery. She waited till summer to do that. She had a hammer toe, which is a toe that looks like that. First time I ever heard of them. They had to break it, and they had to break that toe. Then she had a bunion. While they're in that foot, they took a bunion off, put screws in it, and then they cut two nerves, two nerves on her foot that were causing her great pain. Now, why am I telling you this? Now, you know I always have a message with my stories. I thought you'd be empathetic, but no, you want me to shut up?
Your wife--
Well, we decided to go to a, it's been four weeks. She's getting a little better now and limping around. We went to the beach and the golf, and darn, she didn't want to go in the ocean. I said, okay, let's go. Just hold my hand, hold on to me. We went in the ocean, and the golf site, where the waves are not huge, of course, and she says, well, why don't you body surf one? And I said, okay, you stay right here. So I body surfed in, and I got up and came back and looked, and here's my wife tumbling in a wave, two tumbles, and smashes on her right shoulder. She gets up like a deer in the headlights. I'm grabbing onto her, getting around. She's limping on her bad foot, and now she's holding her right shoulder. And we had her, she was okay, hanging in there. The next day, we were going home anyway, and we took her to get an X-ray. And the X-ray's your first teaching point here. She got an X-ray. It was good news. It was nothing broken. Still sore. The doctor said, if it's not feeling better in a week, come back and we'll have to do an MRI. Well, I thought about that for a minute, and I thought, well, what would an MRI show that an X-ray couldn't show? And of course, the doctor said, it's much more, it gives many more different angles and reports. So she is going back. It's not getting better. So she's going to get an MRI now to check that out. The reason I told you that is, it reminded me of something. It hit me that the C grade for the district, the number of DF schools, of course, you know, I really dive into that. I look at that, and I try to figure out how all that happened, and I know full well how it happened. But I want to tell you that when I went to a meeting the other day, I've gone to a couple of in-service and kind of popped in to see what the teachers are learning, it pained me a little bit to hear the opening of one of the talks talk about the number of kids who failed the FCAT reading test. And there was great specificity given on the number of kids that failed. The failing rate in the third grade was 44%. I've never seen it that high statewide, statewide too, not just Orange County. The fifth grade rate was 42%. The eighth grade, 10th grade rate, I think, was 51% that failed it. And they reminded the teachers of how many kids that was. It was 16,000 kids, and they reminded the teachers of how many school buses it would take to put those kids on a school bus. It's over 300 kids. And I thought, why are we doing this? Well, we're doing this to make them aware, but I will guarantee, if I'm a teacher sitting in that audience, I'm probably thinking, ouch, I worked my fanny off last year. I really worked very hard, but now I'm reminded about this, and I knew this already. Now, the point of the workshop was to help them get better, so it was all good news that way. But I want you to know that I started, I looked at one school last year in particular. We bought a pilot program, a software program, that measured reading progress for 179 days. And I got real curious about it. It's the only elementary school that bought it, and I talked to the third-grade teacher how she implemented it. And I said, you know, at the end of the year, I want to come back and see what this looks like, and to see how the kids progress, because all we'll see is an FCAT score. That's the only thing we'll see. It'll be a one, or two, or three, or four, or five. And so I went back with John Wright, and the principal was Honahan. I just met him in AP there. We all went in and looked at the data, and they immediately ran off the FCAT scores, and they compared the FCAT scores. So I want to show you, if Ryan is back there, would you show a slide that came up in my vision? Here's a slide I came up with. This represented the third-grade FCAT results at the elementary school in Orange County. And the public sees that in August on the left, I had this vision of a bicycle kid finishing a race, and that was a, the one-day test down there means that FCAT was given in one day. But from August to May, this child, they came in with low scores and finished out with a one. Now, this is an actual headline from a website that came on our What's News link from Kathy Marsh, and I was furious about it. I thought it was the West Orange Times, and poor old Andrew Baylor, I met him, and it turns out it wasn't the West Orange Times, but I talked to him for two hours anyway. But he reminded me it was a website, but that's the report. Now, I want you to be the typical Orange County citizen that reads that, does know a lot about it. Almost half of Orange's third graders can't read. Where's the finger get pointed? I would say the teachers get the finger pointed at them, don't they? Bad teachers. Bad teachers. The teachers might say, well, the parents don't support them. Bad parents. They certainly would say, bad school. I talked to PTA president today off the ledge because her school went from a B to a C, and the parents are furious. They're furious. And they talked about the kids in the school that are bringing the grades down. So I said, I want to meet you first thing. Meet when you meet. I want to show you some stuff. Now, that's an X-ray, gang. That's an X-ray. The FCAT is an X-ray. It shows you a particular achievement score. So when I went back in May, I asked them to show me the results of the software program, and Ryan showed the second slide. Now, this is what, this is the MRI. This is what really happened at that elementary school with those kids that made a one on the FCAT. If you look, they started with a reading level growth over here in August at the bottom, but they improved two years of growth. Two years of growth. These FCAT ones are the average scores of these kids. Now, that doesn't get reported. That should have been the headline right there. Students doubled their reading in one school year. In 179 days of instruction, showing Lexile growth on schools we spent $15,000 board-approved money on, and probably more than that times all the schools that have either Read 180 or Achieved 3,000. This year, we purchased a lot more of those programs. Now, what I'm going to do, and what I would certainly love it if the board would do, I've talked to superintendent about this as well, is we've got to accept the FCAT scores because they're law. So we know what we have this year. They're not good. Next year, if we don't have the safety net, they will be worse. I'll guarantee you, they're not going to make the FCAT any less rigorous. So we have this data. We've spent good taxpayer money on it. It produces results. If principals and teachers used it with fidelity on kids, it would produce these kind of results. And my question would be, why can't we also advertise the MRI scores in addition to the X-ray scores? Now, the state doesn't care. The legislators don't care. The DOE doesn't care, but our community would, and that PTA president today would, and that kid who continually gets a one on the FCAT would, and the teacher who taught that kid would. See, these kids ought to be brought up to the auditorium in the school and given a blue ribbon on their shirt. You know, you got a one on the FCAT, but let me tell you, young man, you improved two years reading growth. And teachers, they ought to fill the CLC, and we ought to be standing applause for them to do that. That is amazing. These are the kind of kids that make a lot of teachers not want to teach at schools that have a lot of kids like this. I just met a rookie teacher, I'm telling you, a rookie teacher who had two job offers and didn't accept them because she was looking for a school with a higher grade. Amazing. And we have this data looking right at us. Now, I'm going to dig deep this year. I'm going to find the schools that have the software for math and reading in my district, and I'm going to dive in very, very deep. And I will have a report next year about this time that will show you the MRIs from these particular schools, and it's going to dazzle you. Now, I'm going to do my best to communicate that to every news site, TV station, radio, whoever wants to take that site and try to educate this community and the parents and the taxpayers about what we really do in our schools. And I would love it if this board would consider a project with the superintendent on how can we amass this data and actually show it in a really beautiful, simple way, and line up with Mrs. Communication, Miss Communication, I should say, Mrs. Moore at her communications staff, and maybe line up with Mrs. Flynn and her legislative kind of thing, and be a leader in the state. We could be the only district that says, you know what? Here's the FCAT scores, gang, but guess what? Here's the other stuff. And this is what we really, really need to applaud kids for. So that's my story. That's what I wanted to tell you. I was just fascinated with it, and I guarantee you, I'm going to study it even further. So thanks for your time on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roach. Mrs. Gordon, I still had you queued up. Was that old? Okay. And Dr. Jenkins, was yours old as well?
Yeah, I'm here till 10:00.
Okay. Mrs. Robinson.
Can we discuss that a moment?
Sure.
I mean, since Mr. Roach brought it up. Mr. Roach, I completely agree with you that the FCAT is not the only example of how our students are doing. I have a child, she's in college now. Thank goodness she's done well enough to graduate from high school, but she was a reading level two her whole entire life. She's LD and ADD, and every year it went lower and lower, and by 10th grade, I was just convinced she wasn't going to graduate from high school because she wasn't going to pass the FCAT. But every year, back in the day, they had the NRT, the Norm Reference Test, and every year she'd come home and say, Mom, my friend's got a five on FCAT reading, and I got a two again, and I'm so stupid, and I'm this. And I'd pull out her NRT score and say, you're not stupid. You're smarter than 90% of the kids in the whole United States of America according to this test. So I agree with you, each test has a different measure, has a different, so it's not accurate to say our kids are failing and can't read by looking at one test. I agree with you there. For me to support you on this, for us to do something to show both sides of it, we have to choose and make sure that the staff and the administration and the educators agree on what that measure is. I don't know enough about you, the one you're discussing with us tonight, but it does make sense to me to explain that, yes, based on FCAT, 44% of our third graders failed. But according to this test, and so we need to make sure we support the right test. So that's where I go with this. If you're okay with me suggesting that we make sure we choose the right instrument if the board chooses to go in that direction.
Yeah. What I've learned from Dr. Jar and his staff, I've tried to connect with them every time I learn something, is that there's a measure of reading growth called Lexiles, L-E-X, L-I-E-S. Lexiles are pretty standard, and what's nice about it is most of the software we bought measures Lexile growth, and it's very well accepted, very, Scott Fritz taught me about that and sent me a big piece on the reliance of Lexile growth. It's what the originator, the Vanderbilt University fellow, the founder of Read 180 uses to measure reading growth. So that would be the growth, but I'm not an expert in all that. I just know that there is, there are other ways to measure these kids. And yes, you're right, if we can standardize it among the district, we could report it out and be, could be very accurate with it.
I agree with you. And unfortunately, the one thing that killed my daughter by 10th grade, the state had dropped NRT. They didn't want to pay for it anymore. So by 10th grade, I couldn't show her that she wasn't dumb. You know, thank goodness she did pass FCAT. But it was my one thing that I had as a parent to say, you're not stupid. That test you don't do well on, but you do really well on this test. So I just throw out there that I want to make sure if we choose to do that, we do it across the board with the same test, and that the staff chooses the most accurate test. So I support you.
Ms. Moore.
I guess for Dr. Jenkins, I somewhat agree. I think that going into Common Core, we're seeing a lot of the editorial writers back up the fact that you're going to see lower scores coming into Common Core, but that's okay. But it might help the public to have some constant, whether it's the Lexiles, whatever you all decide. I think that would be very beneficial, and I'm surprised the state DOE is not thinking of that. And I've been concerned because we're seeing several organizations actually, for whatever their reason is, saying, well, you know, these new lower FCAT scores are really where we are in education, and your child's not being well-served. And you're absolutely stunned to see them saying that when they know that the standards are changing and that the cut scores were changed. So I think there needs to be something, but it needs to be, I don't know if you discussed that in your superintendent's meeting, if there's something statewide we can do if there would not be any retribution or harm for trying to do it. And I would think DOE would be pleased with that approach as we go into Common Core, that they can realize the Lexile scores are doing this, but we're changing standards in tests so we don't have this alarm and this sense of doom and gloom that the public schools are failing. It was the first time on the blogs, the last article when it talked about what happened, to start seeing everybody coming out of the woodwork again, thinking that public schools were failing our children, and we're not. So I would absolutely support some research, but I think it needs to be, if not the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, that all of the superintendents did it so that we wouldn't necessarily look like, oh, well, Orange County's not happy, they're trying to do something because they got a C. No, it has to be a broader spectrum of districts, I think, to be believable. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore, and thank you, Mr. Roach. Kathy Palmer. Superintendent, I feel like we should start with you again. You already made your trivia. You know, Kathy, I just want to say that I'm going to miss you immensely. You know, it's a little bit of a cliche, you know, nowadays, you know, and to me, this is high praise. And I hope it comes out right because I'm worried, I'm tired, and I'm not very articulate right now. It's not going to come out right, but sometimes when a man has just a tremendous amount of class, you say he's a gentleman. And whenever I think you, I think of the word lady. You are the ultimate lady. I have never once seen you lose your temper. I have never once seen you treat anybody poorly. Your staff tells me you have a temper. I don't really believe it because I've never seen it. Your husband tells us you do. And, you know, I'm going to miss you immensely. You know, when I first came into this position three years ago, you made it very, very easy for me. You've always been somebody that I could go to, and I think every member of this board could go to, to resolve issues that we have, especially when it comes to students and employees. And you're just an extremely talented individual, and you're one of those individuals, I don't think you're actually retiring in the traditional sense. I have a feeling you're just moving on to new mountains to climb. So I look forward to following what you do after you leave this job and go into your next passion or career. But thank you for everything you've done for Orange County Public Schools. And, you know, I shared this with your family when we were at the lunch that day, the retirement, was it retirement luncheon? You're all blinding, yeah, the retirement luncheon. But, you know, you should be so very, very proud of your career and the heights that you ascended to. So I'm going to miss you. Ms. Gould.
Well, it's actually a little bit of her fault that I'm here. Back in the day when I was at Health Central, Kathy was part of the West Learning Community, and she was one of the wonderful people that showed me that community partnership and collaboration, not only at the district level, but at each of the school levels, was very possible and could be very successful. And I want to thank you for that. And I think I want to thank you for being here. But it is, it has been such a pleasure to know you in multiple capacities over the last several years, and I'm sorry I didn't get more of an opportunity to work with you more closely here.
Well said. Ms. Flynn.
Mrs. Palmer and I go way back because I know most of you realize that I've said it before, but I was the SAC chair when she was my son's PTA principal at Discovery Middle School. Yes. And in fact, my son was also at University High School when Dr. Diaz. So thankfully, I don't have to give two of these in one day. But we made a good team back then. That was great. And then when I was PTA president of the Orange County Council and she was out in the West, we worked together on some issues over there. So it's just been a delight. I've worked with you on all different levels, and I will miss you, but I thank you for being supportive. And in a sense, like Mrs. Gould says, I mean, I think you're part of the reason why I'm here, because I had such a great principal to be a parent with. And so I learned that collaboration and that partnership in a very, very strong way. So thank you. I'll miss you.
Mrs. Robinson.
I want to tell you, Kathy, congratulations. I know you're looking so forward to your new house and your retirement and your trips and vacations and all that, and I just ask you to keep in touch with us because I want to hear how it all turns out. So I've enjoyed the last five years getting to know you, and one thing that's really been interesting for me, not having known you before I came to this position, everywhere I go, someone says, well, do you know Kathy Palmer? Kathy Palmer? Kathy Palmer? I mean, all the schools. Someone always says, well, I worked with her here. I worked with her. So you obviously made an impression, a positive impression throughout your 39 years and your 30 years here at the district, and I'm going to miss you. You've been a wealth of knowledge for me, and I just appreciate it so much. So keep in touch. Congrats.
Mr. Roach.
Kathy, you're just the consummate professional. I think you really wear that well, and you've held down a massive job up here with the chief of staff, you know, being in charge of so many employees. I've really appreciated working with you. You're very good about getting back with us. You've gone overboard and tried to help me with the issues that I've asked the superintendent help for. I was very impressed that day that I had the Boone student job shadow me. And Kathy, I had him try to meet as many professionals as he could up on the ninth floor. He's just a sharp little guy, and Kathy just really took him under her weight. I couldn't hardly get him out of the office with her. She just, I think she just fell in love with him. And she has a very soft side that way, and a very caring side, in addition to that very professional side. So I just, I will miss you. I know you're going to be happy, and I'm proud of you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Am I taking us out of here? Not quite, huh?
Yeah. Mrs. Cato, Ms. Cato after you.
Oh, I'll let.
She has the unenviable task of following you, Mrs. Gordon.
Waiting in the back. But I think I've known Kathy the longest. I've known her all 30 years. And because when I came in '67, Kathy wasn't even in the county. And then she just bopped on up to being everything. And then when they selected her as the principal, I went, what? What the devil? I said, I'm trying for that myself. But because she was just a top, and I made it. I made it there, but I didn't want it. She has just done so much for us, and Dr. Jenkins saw so much in her. I think when Dr. Jenkins came and told each of us that she was going to select Kathy as her chief of staff, I went, wow. Wow. Because we didn't know who was going in that spot when she moved out of it. You couldn't have gotten a better person. There were so many projects that the board had, very important projects, the superintendent's evaluation, continuation, the general council, the unitary status, the whole unitary status thing. I mean, I can go on and on about so many different things that we were able to work on, and that you kept it calm, always calm. And your staff, your staff was just outstanding. You would be there late in the evening. You would be there late in the evening, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 o'clock, just waiting so that you could get it done. I've never seen anybody more dedicated than that. You really, I think, the top job out of all the things I've seen you serve in, in Orange County, I think the chief of staff was just the creme de la creme for you. Because I don't think Dr. Jenkins, I don't even think she knew how well you were due in that position, but you really, because, see, the chief of staff is supposed to compliment the superintendent. And I think you did that. You didn't overcharge. Nobody knew that you were in charge, but all of us knew, and she knew. And I think the person that's going to follow in your footsteps, we're all mentors. We all have been mentors to each other over these 30-plus years, minus almost 50. But with Kathy Pope coming in, that's another good selection, another good choice, another great personality. I just have to commend Dr. Jenkins, board members, because I know both of these ladies very well, and I know their personalities, and they have just been a plus to the Orange County School Board. So Kathy, you know how much I love you. You know that. And I don't wait until the board to tell you that. I think I tell it to you every time we send an email. I tell it to Dr. Lawson. I tell it to Dr. Pope. Every time we send an email, it's just a relationship there. And I want to thank you for everything that you've done for me, to make me look good at the board table, and to have your staff make me look good at the board table, along with board service, because they really do a great job. So Dr. Jenkins, I know you're going to miss her, but you have a great person coming in, and they both are very good friends. in, and they both are very good friends. So I know that Dr. Pope, if she needs to know anything, she'll call her. And I know, knowing Kathleen, my name's taken like I do, I know that she will answer. But she has just been a joy these 30 years to know and to work with. And I love you. God bless you.
Ms. Cade.
Kathy and I were reminiscing in my office last, the earlier part of the week, because we were trying to remember the progression, because she was there when Rob was at Maitland Middle School, and then she went to Howard, and then she came back as the principal. And she had Drew there for part of the time. And so we were trying to go through the timetable. And back in the day, before a lot of our staff started retiring, I used to joke with them, you know, "When you have that school volunteer that never goes away, just worry that she may grow up to be your school board member." Because I was that volunteer that was always there. And it was so bad that Russ, who used to be the maintenance guy in the Dahmerick-Maitland-Lakemont Winter Park area, when I got elected to the school board, he said, "I thought you already worked for us." And I was like, "No, I was truly a volunteer." And Kathy always opened the door, was always very gracious for this mom of two boys that didn't exactly know what to do with them, because sometimes boys make bad decisions, as I've said on more than one occasion. Mine have done that before. And, you know, Kathy, you were always gracious. You were always a great hostess. You always made parent volunteers feel like they were the very special people coming to this district. And then you and Rosita, we had some ups and downs in the east. You were always there for me. There were some interesting times. And then when you became chief of staff and a lot of the stuff, unitary status, hiring the attorney, hiring the superintendent, doing the retirement party for the superintendent. I mean, we cried, we laughed, we were like, "Oh, my gosh, are we going to make the quota? Are we not going to make the quota?" I mean, it was great fun. But, you know, everyone still talks about how wonderful it was and all of the processes that you helped put in place. And oh, my gosh, the superintendent's evaluation notebook that you and Mrs. Gordon have worked on for years and years and years. I mean, your handprint is all over the district. We are going to miss you immensely. But, you know, the superintendent and I keep running into Sylvia Boyd. So if you go learn to be a certified exercise trainer, she got her training thing, and she's leading all these classes. And she looks great, and she's very, very relaxed. We expect to see you after you travel and get all the boxes unpacked, having a whole new focus and just enjoying your life after Orange County Public Schools.
Ms. Moore.
Kathy, I don't have a lot extra to add to all these people who've known you forever, but I've really enjoyed working with you and your grace and ability just to be a calming factor. It's just been inspirational for me. And I know we're going to celebrate and give you a hug over cake in a few minutes. And I wish you the very best.
Well, you know, what a wonderful way to end the meeting. And one thing that some of you may not know about Kathy, but she comes from a partying family. So we have a cake that our pre-adjunct speaker just totally messed up because we didn't get a chance to eat it. So I hope everybody, including those back in the back of the room in the audience, will come help us put this cake away and keep up that Palmer family tradition. With that, we're adjourned.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core state standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.